Can you all hear me? I can't hear you. All right. It's very close to.
Well, listen, can you still hear us?
I've been talking so. So, we're now listening here.
Okay, so, please no microphone. This is going to be up here on the left. Recording and looking here. So, we just started. Uh, let's drop off. Uh, I'm going to add a couple of topics here. Uh, was first the R and R and budget hearing. We originally had discussed in the open meeting of August twenty second and today. We have recently changed that. We've been settling conflict with staff. And our clerk. And so we are altering our R and R budget hearing since September fifth. It will be here as emergency operations center at five P M. So wanting to make sure everyone's there for that day. And this is for August twenty first, twenty twenty three, a public hearing on establishment of visits for first investment housing. This is named adoption of a development. So, that was on first. Topics of the development on available for the regular hours first. And then I also have a letter of resignation from you in the. Not itself being law and justice. And that is effective on the line first. Whether one of the board members from. So, I have submitted a letter of resignation. Like public. The savings for. What was the interest part? Then definitely subordinated our office. On the first, you guys. Thank you guys for allowing me to. Kind of a bottle up. And my topic, one of you, I spelled all three people on the license and have had the opportunity to. Please go to some of you over the phone through email and then just kind of various ways. So I appreciate you guys. Please, uh, talking with me and carrying your feedback. Um, some of the highlights that I would just like to point out regarding extension is. That that we've accomplished that CDC are actively being identified as a candidate. That's really never happened before. So we're making it clear. We are participating in the activities coming to that stage, which is used for programming and that is currently our only source. Uh, for programs on the outside. Uh, we do have an active board with participants. Our typical stations across all CDC, uh, the colleges or that. That will create a strong foundation for the program that we. Uh, some of the things that we're working for is rebranding, make ourselves more marketable. Building relationships for the whole program. Uh, we're carrying relationships with part of organizations providing space. Improve presentation with 4H clubs from the extension office. Improve elections and improve participation. The dates are already been set for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty one, and summer together. Uh, it will take time to investigate on what is extension and why is the role vital for us. Uh, the resources that provide are unrelenting and forever changing. Uh, starting the districting question, we would like to start that. But we felt part of the board, the makers and the. On what that means and how that works. Uh, how you can help. Um, continuing support from the county to the nurse with our little club. We have made improvements over the last few. Last few years before improvement. For us, I'd say the highlight. Uh, we can't get there without the proper funding. Uh, our funding request was left with a federal cost of living of eight percent seven percent. Um, being through these, our districting things from there are improvements. Without the. Um, still without the support from the county and support of our house. With the various things that we do. Uh, your whole sport will make us more time, more favorable when we approach other counties. That's interesting. Uh, that we can do a lot of that with a thousand dollars. Uh, as far as the flight that I kind of, uh, I just. Down from part of the. I didn't bring up the whole thing that I thought was perfect at the time. Um, it is interesting for you. So since the early first one, are we effective as movies? I would say no, we're not there yet, but it's on plan to get out there. And the more we facilitate people, the better off we're going to be. Um, and then it was kind of going through those bullet points. The second page, I have a good problem. The second page basically is the map. And it kind of sort of just threw you out there of why they're kind of focusing on this or that. Grounded on, I know years ago, it's kind of the box of loving ones, but it's sort of a map for reference. They grab it, the way that that may not be the best resource for us, but we are open. But I think that's what I'm saying. And then the third and last one, I'm not even going to work. To the question, um, when we came before you guys last time about explaining. Why districting to help us and provide more. So on this one, you heard the various, uh, areas that extensions can reach out to. With more agents. So if. Counties have two agents or six agents that can specialize in more instead of being the front office. Like they are all that. Uh, so I just kind of want to point that out just for follow up. As far as that goes and then the rest of it, there's going to be some questions that you guys may have about districting to help educate you guys with this. Um, that you guys. Um, so that I just, I'm just here to kind of plead and kind of help. Um. Are are requested for an additional eleven thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars. Uh, all but two hundred dollars is going for payroll and with the recent, uh, retirement date. Of Ray Lab, now, I think you guys are all aware, um, to try to attract someone and get some big candidates in. That's where that additional money will go. And then we will be going, um, back if we can get them. So I am curious going to ask them any questions you may have, more thoughts, concerns, or.
So, the districting stuff. It's going to be converted to a lower. Or. Um, what are you going to say that's funded, carried, or still rolling?
They are their own taxing entities, in my understanding, and then they set their amount and and what they request. And and I'll be honest with you, Alex, I don't know how they give you up of which county, um, pays what proportion. I don't know if upon population or which, I don't assume population. But but I want to be forthcoming in terms of this doesn't mean less will be coming from our county. We could end up having more from our county based. I don't know. It would go away. They would be their own taxing entity. It wouldn't be in the general funding. That is correct. You guys would make that decision. Help us improve and keep up so that we're in a better position so that we're not paying. If that makes sense. Because I think you can suppress, deflect, suppress, and I understand. Our tax income comes from two sources, the sales house. And you guys have to be, you were telling the money. I think you can delay, 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 but then when we're constantly, you know, getting that checkup. And whether you wanted or requested here or not, I think there's going to be need because the majority of it. Funds are are payroll and utility costs go up, all costs to the other store and it goes to over. That's what went on. Um, but where we're at now, I think our utilities are lower than what we were paying. I know. So, I mean, we're all stirring up an increase in no matter whether it's in a personalized business wise or wherever, and it's just trying to make. Uh, I just wanted to say I would stop to, um, the agents to move on to the ground and have really some conversations. I just wanted to start there before I just go right away to their commissioner. Um, just to talk about the districting and kind of their vibe. I think it looks so optimistic and positive. They're they're absolutely okay with me leaving down the. To have them for their talk. And I think everybody has identified that there's ways to work together and collaborate on a path to districting. And just making sure that we can outline what the expectations of all are together. So then it's positive, you know, and then the. So, then I could be glad to email you guys that thing, PowerPoint presentations, because it's going to take every, you know, it's going to take a patient. It's going to take up with the board and it's going to take the public, we involved to make this all work. And then I think, um, on the election side of it, it's going to help. For public knowledge about it in all counties. As far as that goes, because I think all counties, the way, uh, after I talked with them. They all struggle with people coming to the elections to vote. And and what is, where are we going? So, but that's our our active setting is to keep the momentum going. Um, we do appreciate it, of course, how we have together. Part of the main thing that they're serving for.
And people are there in the first quarter. They include two invoices, you know, because, um. One forty thousand eighty eight dollars, right, link the other four one thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars eighty five cents. It is important to follow the policy.
The final part. And then after. What what are we looking for that's worked out?
So, I I didn't. Someone else. At the point. There's a large product. Also. So much. Or for a reason.
I'm all. Why that? A hundred fifty thousand. That he got planned. I got. And that was stuff that was. Hey, what do we look at? You know? Because that one. Something we did a couple of things online. Because in today, are still at the front of the line that is for that office. And a plan for that year, okay, because I'm going to have all this negotiation. I have those money that aside, why I didn't just do that.
It was kind of like that for it to do. That's where it kind of got. We're not talking about doing it wrong. And then our, and I just want to make sure we're prepared.
I I thought that we had talked about like after funding and all the things. We have our implications to then look at whatever part of support off the scene they. Okay, so I just. For the federal department, uh, coming out of the federal department, the third fund and the amount of more.
Okay, we are back from recess and should have all of our technical difficulties fixed here. So, um, moving on to. Petition to vacate road. Mr. Henderson.
Sorry, that was. Uh, they're they're, I was contacted a while back by Grasshopper Township that they were wanting to. Or they had a landowner who wanted to vacate the road, the township prestidies. Or the township board, excuse me, was. Believe that, uh. The petition should be granted in their eyes, uh. That they indicated they hadn't been maintained. And so anyway. They, the rorks are the owners of the land on both sides of the road. They have submitted a petition to vacate the road. Uh, the petition appears to be, you know, about. Illegal petition and have everything in it that's necessary for petition to vacate a road. Uh, in Kansas. Roads, whether county roads or township roads have to be, uh, can only be opened or vacated by the board of county. Uh, so even though this is a township road, it's still the jurisdiction of the board of county commissioners open or closed state road. And there is a process where either the board of county commissioners goes out and views the road. And meets with. Landowners that are nearby if they show up, uh. To determine whether or not, if a utility exists for the road or whether the road should be closed. And then also to determine whether there are any damages that someone will suffer by the closing of the road. You will also have the option of appointing. Road viewers to do that for you and make a report back to you. And when we've done this in the past, we use the, uh, the township board. As the viewers. Uh, I did email with, uh. Township board and they are willing to to do it. Uh, so. The next step is for us to set, uh, well, it's for you to appoint them and to, uh. Then there will have to set a hearing, which I think we've, uh. Decided on. August fourteenth. To for them to meet at the roadside, six thirty in the evening at three twenty sixth road and Chippewa road. At the intersection to hear. If there are any interested people that want to appear to. The voice there. So, uh, there should be submitted with the petition was a bond. By the landowners and that is the landowners should be responsible for any costs associated with closing the road. That would include publication notice that I just talked about. Uh, in the unlikely event the viewers request, uh, compensation for serving as viewers. That would come from the bond as well. Uh, and then if there are any damages that are claimed, that would come from the bond. So there should be no cost to the county associated.
I think earlier we just, uh, had a brief discussion and it said that the, uh, that there is a. Power line through there. Is that?
There is. There's an overhead power line.
So. What happens? I mean, how do? Is the township still going to have to maintain? The road for.
No, uh, we will maintain, uh, in the order. Uh, if there is an order to vacate the road, it will maintain the easement for, uh, for public utilities. But there's no responsibility for maintenance. That would be up to, in this case, Evergy. Who, uh, if they want to. Cut down trees on the. On there, they would have to do it. But they would have the right to go in and do that.
But what about access? If there's a power outage and the lines are down, how do you get trucks in if there's no longer a road there? But what about access? If there's a power outage and the lines are down, how do you get trucks in if there's no longer a road there? And it's now crop ground?
Yeah, we have a lot of places in the county where they manage to do that, where they have. Where they have lines that go across fields and they've got, uh, they've got trucks that. Can get in there and.
But then you have crop damage. That's the reason I'm I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate there that we know what what's going on here before. Because it's very important that we have power.
Yeah, that's, uh. That's an issue for sure, but, uh, there would be a legal right for access. Those tend to be in situations where in times where, you know. Ice storms don't usually happen while there are crops in the ground, you know, they can, I guess, but it's. They usually don't. Uh, and that's what generally causes the the big damages to the lines, but, okay. That's really, I think, all we can do, we can't solve. Every problem, I guess, but.
Well, it'd be much simpler if there wasn't a. A utility there. I've just kind of, I got, picked my interest on that, so.
Yeah, I I had, I didn't look at the. The grid, if you will. I don't know how, yeah, I would assume it would be difficult for them to reroute the power lines. Kind of expensive to reroute the power lines and it did go across there, but. So. I did, did that answer the question?
Yes.
Um, so I would suggest that if, uh, if you find that the petition is a legal petition. That we adopt that to sign the bond and accept it. I also have a preliminary order. Uh, that appoints Scott Lowe, Ryan Swinson and Kevin Keel. As the viewers and orders them to, uh. And the county clerk to get together and set a time with what we've already done. And that that would be published in the newspaper. Uh, I I have a publication that is ready for the. The work to say.
Heck.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So do need a motion.
Yes, I would like to, uh, a motion to approve. Um, the bond first in regards to the petition to vacate road. Portion of three hundred twenty six road length located. Um, as stated in the petition, so a motion to approve would.
So move. Say.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passing three to zero. Okay. Then. A motion to approve the preliminary order of the Board of County Commissioners of Ashland, Kansas. Um, to vacate the road for the petition of vacate the road as explained by Mr. Henderson.
Also move. Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to supply new copies?
I think they're separate. One of them is the. Uh, it's the bond.
Yeah, and then she had an order in the blue folder for me, kind of. So that I think there is your calls. Yeah, do you want?
I can't remember if that means change.
That's okay, let's sign both of them and. Then you'll have two copies, one for, a good one for. I'll stay there, please, hold back.
Pat, when is the time and place again of the viewing?
August fourteenth at six thirty in the evening. Okay. That will be just before they are.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, Budget discussion.
Okay. Handouts for everybody, and we're just gonna. Like to just start with the road and bridge, which is down on top, all the other. Uh, just reading everything else and also. Sure, let's just unclip it and take the the first. You know, I can start this however you would like. If you. Pull your budget expense worksheets. That will. Uh, all the changes are listed right there. Our input sheet, this one right here, if you look at twenty twenty three budget. You look at the proposed twenty twenty four budget. And off to the right. It will show the increases. Uh, when you go to. Commodities. Three hundred fifty, four, there was actually four hundred fifty thousand that we increased for road material, because before. When I did my road plan, it was road material, so I took everything out of there. And what we're trying to do is put in new line items. And we are. Make it where everyone can see and we can see. What we're doing, so down at the bottom of this blue sheet. With a sheet in the blue, like heyday, right, for our. Projected road plan. It would take one hundred seventy three thousand dollars worth of heyday, three hundred twenty six, three hundred sixty one thousand of road oil. All right, before. That was coming out of contractual and road material and not leaving any money left for rock. Everybody following with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what we're trying to do is line item these. Like the paint striping, we added it, so it's down there. Estimated cost and then patching, which would be the dirt patching and asphalt patching. We feel like we need to prep the roads. For chip and seal. So is there any questions on any of that? So when, so we, we started with four fifty, we took a hundred of that. And put it up here with contractual services. Because if you look at the year before, contractual services was five hundred nineteen thousand. But a hundred thousand that went towards. A bond payment. And then we had four hundred nineteen thousand of contractual services that also went into the road plan. Well. It shouldn't have been under contractual services. Because we were spending the money doing the work ourselves. So what we're trying to do is make it to where. The line items match, you know, we can bid out two hundred fifty five thousand dollars worth of work. Does everybody following with?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the incident?
No, I'd like to see what's actually happening.
Because.
This is very.
When we started.
Appreciate it.
It was very vague, and so we would have. We would have, we came up with a road plan. Well, now my numbers are matching the road plan down here on the bottom. Is that?
Yeah.
All right, so. After the ride, the other day. These two are the two, you've got two of them. One of them was the original road plan, and it was a million dollars. And I've cut it back to six hundred eighty one thousand. Sorry, pick this one. Imagine.
Oh, the new changes.
Yes, okay. So, so what I, this is kind of what I took from you guys, and you guys can, if you disagree, this is why they're here to look at. So like on, uh, Cheyenne Road. It was going to be two hundred fifty thousand and that's middle. You're trying to get it out, I took that out.
Yes.
In the group for twenty twenty four. So I took that two hundred fifty thousand out, and that was a big chunk of it. And then I moved, removed, uh. Osborne. Two thirty, oh, stage. Because until we fix that road, there's no reason for that to be in that plan. So I took. The two miles and the two hundred fifty thousand out, and we went from a million. Seven thousand five hundred seventy three to six hundred eighty one thousand two hundred and four ninety. But that is, you, you guys, this is all subject to change. We can move whatever you would like. And make it work, but I'm trying to come up with money for. Ottawa Road.
So like on Cheyenne?
We would, we would chip and seal the.
Existing.
Existing ends and then just keep maintaining the gravel. Okay. And that's. You know, and then if there's something in here you guys see that you want to change, you know, we've got, we've got some time, we can do that. So that's what my biggest goal is.
And maybe this isn't, uh, important, but it it changed in order, so I was wondering if the change in order had anything to do with, if that's.
No, we just moved, we do, we were just moving.
Okay, so.
So I order it makes no difference, it's just those, the roads.
Well, I, you know, I thought possibly that if that. By the changing of the order, if we were out of funds, that that was the first one that got struck or that, you know, that's the reason I.
No, no.
I, I just, most of these stayed in basically the same order, but a couple of them, all right, thank you.
So that's. So does everybody see that and see what I've done there? All right. Question? All right, so then. If we go to this project track. Over twenty twenty three, at the top on the bond projects. Was Morton Road, we had one million one hundred ninety seven thousand one hundred forty four dollars. Left in the bond. The Morton Road project cost one million six hundred sixty nine thousand six hundred ninety two. So we were over budgeted, so that four hundred seventy two thousand five hundred forty eight is going to have to come out of special highway. All right, the culvert. On three tenths. Is two hundred twenty thousand, that's coming out of special highway. So these totals, when we put these in, they calculate, they go right on through into the next year. So if you look at our road plan for this year, see I showed the four hundred nineteen for contractual. It's taken a hundred and thirty five out of special highway, but I think I can get by without that. And then the road oil was a hundred thousand, and that comes up with the money. To pay for the road plan. Any questions on that?
Say it again.
That last part, so. This is how we were doing it before, right? The road plan, we were taking out a contractual for a lot of it. And we were taken out of, uh. Road material. So if you jump right across over to twenty twenty four. Everything's itemized at your heyday, your road oil, your striping and your patching. Catching. Over their line item, where over here, it was just, this is.
Locked in.
Right, locked in, so this. With the road plan. Would be budgeted in money.
Right.
And it shows. With this current one that I did show, this is, this is where we would be.
Right, so instead of like, it matches that practical here. As and the distance for you, you're so broken out.
Yeah. To where they're easier. And it makes it easier for me and for everyone else to understand. So road projects twenty twenty three. These are some culverts that we know we have an issue with. That, uh. Have to be replaced. So. So what I did, when I increased the budget. We took the road projects, if you go up here on line item, second one on the budgetary, um, but. A road project fifty two, one hundred, five hundred sixty nine thousand. And then we added the two hundred fifty five thousand for contractual. That gives us money for road projects. We've never, since I've been here, we've never had this line item. All right, so. Uh, bridge in point oh twenty six for sixty five thousand dollars. This is where it gets a little. If we do not get. The bridge that we. Applied for. On Sheridan Road.
That's this one there.
It's sixty three thousand, if awarded, that's what our cost share would be. If we do not get that, then we can pull that off of there and put it in the special bridge. And. Probably make that work. So that would give us the total of eight hundred twenty four thousand. To do something with. Ottawa Road. Now. Gabe was there yesterday, grabbed this sheet right here as the last one. This is often his first. When he did the road rehabilitation, his first estimate was five hundred thirty four thousand dollars a mile. And he said a six hundred fifty thousand would be a good. Budgetary. Number and then sixty five thousand dollars a mile for their. Uh, engineering. That's without any tubes. Be replaced. So, and I. When I, uh, we just got fifty five thousand dollars for the tubes, I left the budget at forty five thousand, so if we had more culverts to buy. There should be somebody in there to help cover that.
But you said a sixty five thousand.
That's engineering, that's everything, staking everything out, telling us what we need.
It's always.
From beginning to end, just like on more.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that is total or?
That's, that was his total for that mile.
For a mile.
For a mile. So, but that's checking the tubes. Now, if there's any drainage issues, we can find a way to take care of that. But. That's, that's what we have laid out.
One. One thing I just want to mention, just for the public's knowledge and for all of us, is. You went through this and. I appreciate the numbers of being able for everybody to see that, but when you mentioned over budgeted amount. I just want everyone to know that even during, like, we weren't, we knew that going it, like. Three bids, we knew what it was going to cost and it cost what we knew, what we chose. Um, we just knew that it, we had to utilize money out of other areas to pay for it, so just for the public, so like, when you hear over budgeted and all the things, it's like, no, we. This is what we bid, you know, it didn't come over what we anticipated, so just. I know, we know that in internal here, but just to reiterate that for the public to understand that.
So here's, here's something else. If you go to Special Highway in twenty twenty four. Uh, the Ottawa side, we told them would probably be after the first year before it's funded, a hundred thousand. Sherman Road project would still at a four hundred thousand now. Do we, we have site three and four. That we put on the shelf. So. That's still sitting out there. And then we have the Ottawa Road, so that this decision has to be made. Do we wait? Or try to find another? Avenue or? Do you guys understand where I'm going here? We have to be, it's like Ottawa Road. And these two sites.
So I guess I would just think that Ottawa Road would be chosen in the fact, in the fact that. We have these engineers sitting on the shelf and we know and we've learned that through cost share projects, when you have your ducks in a row and you're planning and it's sitting on the shelf, you have a better. Usually a better chance to, to be awarded that versus.
Agree.
And al- and also that sets us up for. The future of Ottawa Road, right? We can't do it all at once, but we've started, so then that shows on our next cost share of like, we're trying and we're, yeah, we initiative, yes, absolutely.
So, and I would like.
Said, site two, it's set in a mile.
Site, okay, site two on Ottawa Road. Is, uh, between, it's the one we stopped and looked at. Where I had the line drawn in the road.
Oh, yeah.
And they were putting in that box. Okay, so that's not going to be completed this year, so it will be after the first year.
Okay.
They didn't think it would be done before the first year, so I had to take it. And move it. From Special Highway in twenty twenty three, Special Highway in twenty twenty four.
This year, next year, then what distance on Ottawa do we get finished?
That would. We would go a mile.
Okay.
We have to choose one mile where we want to start.
Okay.
Whether we want to start. I mean, it's basically Osborne too, you know, if we want to start on the south end or we started two sixty two, then we go a mile.
Which recommendation?
What did you guys think when we drove it? I would like to start on the north end and work south, but at the same time, the south end is probably, it's all bad. It's all going to be bad, it's all going to come up, no matter what we do. It's not necessarily going to be, uh. We're going to be fans of whichever end we start the other.
Hey, but it's south then was as bad as it north then, but maybe I'm, I don't know, what do you guys think? I mean, they're all, like you said, all.
This decision we have to make.
No, absolutely, and so I was wondering, and I know it's usually. Better to start on one end or another, but also if we're separating it within the miles, when Gabe gave us the drill, uh, the core drill. Per presentation, he made mention of the creek that runs through there, so like if, if one of the miles. Ends up to be down there at the two thirty, if that area. That, does that make more sense if you can do it, schedule it around harvest, all the things, right, of, of truck traffic? Do the. That part, cause it's gonna just continue getting worse with the creek running under it, and then.
Culverts.
And then build out from there. I don't know, I'm just, just throwing it out for.
So what I would.
Thought process.
What I would like, if, if we decide to move forward this. Then. Get some of the culverts replaced before the project starts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, you know, this is, this would all have to go out to bid. Uh, I had bet us out here last week, they came and looked at the Morton. And they called me before and said, have you got anything else you'd like us to look at? And I said, yes, would you guys look at more Ottawa Road? So there's uh, between what? Milling it all off and getting the millions out of there, as Gabe had done. There's another options where they put that right back into the road. So Gabe is gonna be talking with them, just. You know, for uh, reference and we, and experience. Which would be the best, cause one may be a little more economical than the other, end up with the same result, because we all want. The one result. That we're done, we've made an improvement, and we don't have to go back and, and rework everything.
So I guess if the, if that critical area wasn't an option, I would say north as well, and that's just because all of the arteries funnel and. Everybody uses that section, so like, starting from there and working your way back um, from the north. But um.
That would be my, my guess too.
Yeah.
And that's, I'd say that intentionally, yes, is because, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, and next year we might say, why didn't we do the, you know, but.
Yeah.
Uh, that is a thing.
Make a decision.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, to me, it makes more sense to continue uh. From the north, continue your good road, instead of having good, bad.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so have everything continuous. Uh, as, as much as you can, and then the next mile we tack will be. Just adding that on.
And so you don't have.
Matching made the whole time.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, and I think Gabe can probably give us that. I just remembered during his presentation, he men- made mention of, of that.
And there are some other things to look at here too, if we can't widen everything, if we're fixing the road and we apply for uh, the local road safety plan, triple A. We're gonna have more of an opportunity to get selected, if we've already, hey, we can afford to do this. Uh, so I think, I think we would have a better opportunity to get some cost share on, on the YB number. Of the culverts, so that we can, cause some of it, you know, the boxes people. Before we do that. But this is. This is what we came up with, we spent a lot of time, uh, Mark was there yesterday for a while, last week for a while. And uh. The, as I said, it explains. Explains the salary contractual commodities in bits, and it shows the increase. This was figured with a. The salaries was figured with a fifty cent raise halfway through the year. And if that's something that you guys uh, don't see fit to do, then we can take that fifty cents out.
You gotta cover that, it's the main thing.
Yes, so I mean, that's right, but we do have it, we do have another spreadsheet that has. As or without that fifty.
And I think it's important to note that on the sheet. Over at the very top right corner, it shows the breakdown. That's increased the, the nine hundred twenty-seven thousand. Over twenty-three's number. If you minus the bond payments for the bridge bond and the, the road bonds, it's only a three hundred sixty-one thousand four twenty-three increase. For road and bridge. Stop, stop the ball.
Yeah, as we move.
Those bond payments.
Yeah.
And that was something else I always wanted to hit on today, is was, when you see that number, it looks like it went up, that, it's just we have. Another thing that's been moved over in, in, in the budget process, moved to be more uh, transparent. But it's, it looks like an add increase, which, but it isn't, it's just same number only expressed in a different right.
So uh, in prior year, there was bond and interest fund, it had its own taxing levy. So that has been reduced to zero, and those payments have been moved into the road and bridge department under county general.
Three sixty-one, four twenty-three, that's what you, that's actually, thank you.
And then five sixty-six oh fifty-eight is the two bond payments per year. Five hundred sixty-six thousand.
So, yeah, with what we planned for twenty-three, when it's getting there, it will be done.
We started, we started today.
Well, that's, I'm just bowing, you're talking roughly twenty-three miles here.
Over then, probably twenty, you know, with the, with, with some of the, alright, so when we, we paid for. We should get four or five years before we have to chip and seal.
Yeah.
Okay, so in our uh, micro steel. We should hopefully be in a situation where it's four or five years before we have to do that. So that's buying us time, and then if we do. Ottawa Road, then that'll take that stretch. And extend some of that, but yeah, about, about twenty a year. And then we'll try to figure out, if you know, in May, one road might be three years, next road might be four, we'll just have to look at how they. What we need to do. You know, if this road's still holding together, but then the patching, when we figure the patching, the patching is actually gonna be figured for the year ahead. So.
Right.
When we asphalt patch, we wanna wait till the next year to chip seal it, if possible. So that it has a chance to cure, and the oil will. Will bond. To the. To the new asphalt. So, and, and that, some of that will change. And, and some of it's, you know, learning our roads, and some will be more one year, and it'll be less another year, and then maybe we'll have. Maybe we'll have an option for uh, to address another situation we have that. That arises, you know, cause we, we really don't have a, a spare amount of money for stuff that just comes up.
Uh, you mentioned last time we were talking, at some point about getting traffic counts done.
Yes.
Is that in your budget, or is there a cost to the budget?
We, we have everything.
You have everything, yeah. And okay, that was part of that.
No, we have a, we have uh, two or three counters.
Okay.
You can set up, and we can, you can get counts.
Okay. And also, I want to remark to the uh, the striping has been extremely positive, and we've had nothing but good thing. So we are following up with, we uh, said that that was our test. On the project, uh, and so for this year, we've got twenty-three thousand five hundred twenty-two. For striping and just slightly more than for next year for twenty twenty-four.
Estimated fifteen percent, so.
So uh. Have been doing, that's what it costs, but overall, I think over the cross. The uh, life of the road before you have to chip and seal it, it's gonna be well worth it. So it's kind of, as we get to them, we do a new uh, road, chip and seal it or, or pave it. This, we'll get striping on it, and so eventually they will all get.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why it's nice, having all these lineups, and you can actually see, okay. This is for that, it goes with the road plan, you know what we're doing. And that, and that's something I want to bring up, when we drove McPherson. The, the, right north of Cummings.
Yep.
So I think my uh, plan of attack is going to be, when we get done, chip sealing. We are gonna go in there and. Get the drainage where it needs to be, and we're gonna chip seal along the edge of the road. On both sides, and then come back and chip seal the rest of the road, and just see. After we go in with a nerve patch and fillable, so, but I think that's what we're gonna try.
Edges where they.
Okay, it will double, double or possibly triple the edges. If there's something underneath.
So it's traveling uh. I mean, like if you was expecting, I noticed they had actually like cut a slice off the side of the road, virtually a. Maybe a foot wide or a foot and a half, and then repaved.
Yeah.
You know.
And I've, I've thought about.
I'd seen that for, before, it was really interesting.
I want to see, we could do that, cause I was thinking about it, just since what we're the. Where we are with our budget when we get to that.
Yeah, that, when I saw a, a way, you've been on the road, there's slides, we got that, that perfect, that'd be great.
And that's what we, we had discussed milling two feet and then putting.
Yeah, this was.
Four inch.
Yes, where it's just in there, we can get back, well, basically, did the center straight. Center of the road, this bit bad, and it did the center, and then it was straight, and so all the asphalt is straight down the middle, and it was straightened.
Wow. And I will be uh, giving all those contractors. On trying to do the patching for next year, here directly, and try to do it in that before the end of the year. Wow, about saying October.
You know, contracts to help you get culvert system, more efficient, it's awesome.
Yeah. And I've, we've been doing that. Yes, so, because our guys are busy, like today, they started the chip and seal. Uh, they started between two ten. And on Thomas to the run side park, and then they finished the load. Start on two thirty-fourth, and then tomorrow, probably two or three trucks, we kind of start slow and make sure everything's gonna. Work like it should. And then we'll. Go from there, just like. Any questions, any?
I've, I think human work together, this is great.
Love it, and I want you, I want you to go here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Talking about a rate being placed on Sheridan, you said Sheridan.
Yeah, Sheridan and two sixty-two. Where the, we applied.
There's a gas line.
Yeah, yeah, we applied, we applied for a talk here.
And Sheridan. About two forty-fourth that bridge.
We haven't applied for that.
Like nine years ago.
We have a rating system on them, that we can buy, if we have to qualify, if we can.
I don't think that worked on the teacher. I had one more question, Chris, I mean, you know, trying to grind some of the false data here and there.
I mean, Sherman, you know, Sherman.
Sherman, yeah.
All right, so. There's pros and cons to that. And we just tried it, we're trying it on a little stretch of. Uh, tops. What that is. It's a concrete underneath, beating.
Right.
All they will have.
Right.
So we ground them off on Thomas. Because I've had some professionals tell me that once you grind them off, and then it'll just fall out, then it'll be there.
Oh, really?
So. We, we ground them off on, on Thomas, and we're gonna see what happens.
That'd be good.
So, but I understand, but if it works, and that's something we. But I didn't want to go down too near and grind all them off, that would create a whole other issue. But, you know.
You're doing a good job.
Well, thank you, we're trying, and I want everybody to know that Emily has helped with all this also, this has been a great. Group effort throughout the whole thing, and all the way forward to work is for the group effort with everybody. So as far as road and bridge. We have time, if you guys see something that you would like to change on the road plan. Uh, for anything. Let me know.
I'm gonna, I wish you all your lead, you did a good job getting feedback, I'm sure you talked to. A lot of users, roads as far as sheriff and emergency and schools and so. That, that part was good to me, but I like is once it's all done and where it plays, it's to somehow get this information posted on the website. So we're gonna look at and say.
I agree.
What are we gonna do, my road, oh, here's my road, maybe it'd be next year, you know, that kind of.
All right, that's fine.
You know, once it's got a fine.
Once you guys, once it's nearly set.
I mean, I put a qualifier, it's just finalized budget, cause the next year we change, this needs to change.
And then, and then just like this, you know, if the changes before, we have the opportunity, we still have a standard budget.
And it will need a little narrative too, cause. It's like, I need a new, uh, language here, a little bit. And this, and I would make sure that you put proposed, because some of this stuff could be subject to change, even after, I mean. This is for budgetary purposes, but if something comes up and it's like, oh, wait a minute, you, you said you were doing it. Well, you know, something else could have came up, you know, this is our intention, it's uh.
Well, I'll tell you what I've been to do, first thing, I want to go back and I want to put it right up here, proposed.
Yeah.
No, seriously.
I, I, well, you see what my point.
Yeah, I know exactly, because if you.
You said that winner.
That's why, when I read this, I was like, oh no, we're not, oh.
No, and I.
Is that in access to the bond? Funding, there'd be a fair number there, several budget.
No.
No.
We only had two, two million for the bond was still.
Yeah.
And we used part of the last year, and this is the remainder, and then uh, that's probably, we can change that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where it looks.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure.
That's, that's how I, that's for me to look at it, for me to understand.
No, you're fine, well, and that's what I immediately pulled it up, I'm like, wait, we didn't that in the diaries.
No, we were good, I mean, it's just. Uh, so any questions on road and bridge, no. If you guys want to look through the other ones. We've got. Well, just we. Annoquially, there's gonna be one thing that sticks out. And that is, we kept the budget from a hundred and seventy-six thousand to a hundred and fifty-three. And that is bringing on chemicals. Getting it back where it needs to be. And we will watch that, and if we need to do more next year, then we will adjust accordingly. We're looking at. Ordering our chemical as needed instead of making too big orders.
You get a contract price though, and the front end is.
Well, what we would do is get quote price from, right, it's two or three different people.
Lock into price then.
Well. I don't know that we could, so the, so the lock and enterprise, you know, there's a, there's a good part to that, there's a bad. You know, the bad part.
Take a minimum.
The bad part is. If it goes down, you're locked in, if it goes up, the good part of you're locked in, but what's happened with us. And Ben just came back from a, an obnoxious meet. Meeting. Basically a convention, and a lot of counties are going to this, because. When we were out at two forty, I mean. We had to buy different kinds, different brand names, but we've got one now that's very expensive, and no one's gonna buy. And there was quite a bit ordered. So that's something we're probably gonna have to use. To get rid of it, whereas. We don't want to have these big carryovers from year to year. So it's, it's, it's up to you guys, but that's kind of how we're looking at it, maybe order. As needed, and then maybe have a decent order in the spring, but not all of it at once. But there will be quotes, it's just like the tire thing, we're keeping track of all of our quotes, they're all saved. And.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, okay, special highway just shows, yeah. Budgeted for, for five hundred thousand.
And maybe just note that for the public, that those amounts are estimated from.
From the state, their estimate, doesn't mean that those are set, right, still either, because it goes on.
So Joe always budgets the expense to match the revenue that we get from the state. Um, so it's kind of always a net zero, you know, so.
With the state sitting on more cash, that they have historically, it's been, you talked about recent funding. You guys heard anything?
You're.
I have heard, okay.
Little county lake, we went up. By the way. Flowing. And so far, I think that's working pretty good. We don't have, well, we cleaned up a bunch of trash, uh. Some of what wasn't on there, that we got yesterday, was our guys are always. Putting down that they're going to the lake when they're cleaning up and everything, so as year to date, that's not accurate, so she working on getting those straightened out.
As far as allocation of time.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, so the expense. Expense comes out like it's supposed to.
Any, any question about anything? Yeah, I think.
We're talking about the cases, feel way out of your family.
There has.
There has, and that is. A lot of money.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that need to be done to that lake. You told it silted, I mean, it silted in and a dam, and the list just goes on and on.
Like sugar lake.
Yeah.
That's how it works, water, water's involved. Yeah, Mark, we have any idea roughly what these changes, how that affects the proposed mill?
No, I don't, I have. Thanks for that, no.
But if. You. If we need to meet again. That's why I kind of wanted to get the day in, because last week we did our trip. I got some information from some people. I got some information from some people, are can I have a chance to sit down? My, excuse me. Tried to read what you guys were thinking, though I think I hit it fairly close.
What you're doing this year is landing a grant for next year.
And then every year I've tried to make it better from when we started.
I really enjoyed you taking us all together on that tour.
More we need to someday, we need to go see. Because most of our culprits are in bad shape, but a lot of the bridges are in bad shape, but we can only. You know, it gets to the point where we're very, very close to being out of our, where I. Get our cost share, but you know, the, you know, fund exchange is going down, so next year we got. Like eighty-eight thousand, next year our estimated seventy-six thousand. And it started out close to a hundred and I started, although that goes down every year, that's where I get our cost share. I put it in special bridge for that, so uh, someday we may have to look into. If there's some way we can. By the way, you have to give cost share. Because everybody, a lot of people think that the cost here, like the bridges. That we put in a million dollar bridge, also something. That's not something that we normally budget for, and we've been very fortunate. And we've had at least one bridge a year since I've been here. So that money adds up. Those, we've tried, but we still have to, that's not all free either, you have to pay, you have to be able to pay that upfront. Yeah, and then you get reimbursed, so all of that's not as good and easy as. That's what it seems, you know, in the. The larger cities and. Municipalities, whatever, it's easier for them to come up with that than it is for us. Because we've discussed all of this, trying to figure out where we.
How much is that usually, every typical project, million bucks, two million? What's typical project where you had that obstacle to be upfront? What's a range?
We haven't, we haven't done those yet, because we stopped. Well, if you, if you were gonna do Ottawa Road. And it would be. Six million, we're gonna have to build a couple up with, to pay them.
But you can scope the project, see if it's a million bucks or something.
But you have to have all that laid out before you apply.
And some of the feedback on our previous applications we got, when it, if it's a ninety-ten. If you come in at seventy-thirty, it looks better to them that you might, you, you know, all the feedback that we receive, so.
We've tried that, still.
Yeah, it's.
But we've got more feedback from them on things that we need to do, you know, if we get business owners along that road or. Or whatever, the, the.
Leave them like the safety striping. The signage, all of the.
We're taking everything.
Hand in hand.
We're trying, you know, we all know, we are, we do, we, we probably don't get that out to. To the county as well as we should, but we are trying a lot of different avenues to help us be more attractive when we apply for the. For the grants.
You do the ones who get paid back on, what's the timeframe to get paid back?
I didn't know that. Honestly, what do you know when we, we were getting ready to apply for that one week, so.
It was, I think, three months. Ninety days.
After completion. After completions.
Four month project.
Or it could be a year project. Because that had several different sides and it was gonna take a while.
Something considered going down the road is that we're doing a temporary, let's say it's a two million dollar project. And we're getting paid back, so it's, we're doing a temporary note. Get out some interest, but then. Trying to do. You wouldn't do it every year, but maybe to get over the hump on a couple of bigger ones, then, then it'll be easier, so. Just kind of figure out that balance. I just have to consider.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and if you want to meet. The eighth or whatever, if you guys, whatever, let me know.
Right now, yeah.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Mark.
Okay, I have. An unfinished business, I have a purchase order. For Atchison Senior Village to come out of their capital reserve fund. It's one door, it's a southeast great room door, new wander management solutions. Um, in the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and five cents. Lindsay has proposed this to us and made us aware that the store is currently not working. And if the state were to come in, this does qualify as an immediate jeopardy tag, so she would like um, us to consider approving this as soon as possible. So do I have a motion to approve? It's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Any need for executive sessions today?
Maybe next week.
Right. We um, have some guests and we haven't had a chance really to look and sign the bill, so I'm gonna. Let the folks from Walnut Township. Oh, okay. Quick break in. Prior to you getting here, just to get you up to speed what we talked about, um, we went through the resignation letter of Leo. Um, and then we also said that we were going to advertise um, for the position. And be able to solicit anyone interested for the next few weeks and then August fifteenth, we will appoint um, at our meeting. Someone to take his, take his spot, so. Just kind of, yeah, let you guys know that as well and.
That's pretty much it, the media says, oh, there's one, we're gonna get somebody.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we, Michelle does a good, she will put it out, publish it so that um. Everyone in the county is aware of the vacancy and has a chance to submit letters um, to us.
Pat mentioned earlier about the grasshopper vacating the road. That the, that the commission can approve the vacate or open the road. We've got a road that we've discussed with you. That he lived on. Three houses on that road and it's not really legally attached to the road. You guys said you could.
Well, I, I think I had sent an email and maybe I could be more specific. I don't, I don't recall who all was copied on that, but uh, someone could file a petition to open a road. And it does. There are some requirements of having a description of the center line of the road and that may be a little bit problematic, because. Sorry, remember this isn't a straight line and it isn't, uh, it isn't on a section line currently. Anyway, uh, someone could present a petition to open a road, they could go through the same process.
Property owners on both sides of the road, if I had to agree. To.
Well, not necessarily. They, they wouldn't necessarily have to agree, but if they don't agree, um, there could be. I don't know if there would be a claim of damages. Hard for me to imagine there'd be claim damages for opening a road unless they're taking land from a landowner, I don't know. It's the road located on boundary line. I should say the drive located on boundary line or.
I would say when they put the power poles through. We went through all that at Ben where they wanted to know, so the power poles would stay on an easement, so they wouldn't have. Somebody couldn't file damages on them for being on their property, so there is an easement through there for the power. They go through, where are the lines at? I don't know.
But that road or drive as it exists now, is that a property on? Is the. It is property, so there's.
One side of the road is owned by somebody else.
So it probably wouldn't be existing. Uh, on those uh, property, there would be. The uh, boundaries listed. So.
So the process that we just went through for grasshopper, where you have the petition from the landowners, they put up a bond. Um, and then we would appoint, would it be like Walnut Township trustee or the same process as we just walked through and explained?
Yes, I guess the difference would be, we, we, we need to get a description of the. Center line of the road, and I'm trying to look at the. Perils to see.
Usually they always said the road abandoned, landowner loaded to the middle of the road. The theory I always understood, believe you own property, you own most on one side and other people, you own the center of the road. So, I mean.
These, it looks to me, I. I'll tell you, I've talked with, with Roger Denton about the, the lines and the. The photos and he tells me the lines are always perfect, the photo is sometimes a little off. But the drive appears to be south of the boundary line for the three parcels that it passes through. So. Yeah, I, I'd be happy to talk to you about trying to come up with a petition.
I don't believe the legal descriptions on the property even. Allows or has so many boundaries for a road being through there. When I checked on it anyway, it was just the property lines and that was it. Property lines ran into each other.
And I think he was saying that the property line is basically, the, or the road is on one side of the.
Right, fire lines are printed right down here.
Yeah, maybe that's the edge, but it's all on one side of.
Thirty years. I mean, you know. I just thought, you know. Three people on there, made, you know, they paid the taxes, it wasn't real maintain.
Yeah.
They had to hire it, get it done.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff, it's, there's no clarification, there's no records, there's no nothing, so it's pretty hard to create something out of nothing, though.
Well, I mean, when you're talking about you could open it up, well, with the decision, I didn't, that's why I mentioned that.
Yeah, it looks like maybe there's a fourth parcel that, that is landlocked. Like, could, could be serviced by a. By that same drive that would be camera. It has access.
Yeah, I was gonna say that the landlord is the person that bought the property.
It does have access. If you want to talk about that, we can talk about it, okay?
Did you guys have anything else for us?
I think that we didn't receive all of our stuff the other night, Ron, it's during notice. As in, I believe there were boxes of. Asked things from the former treasurer.
But the board of county commissioners doesn't have any authority over townships other than the appointment of. That they will appoint for replacement, but they don't have any authority to order a township officer to. To deliver property or something like that, uh, so I. I guess you're welcome to tell them about it, but I don't, there really isn't anything they could do about something like that.
Would that, would going to a county attorney be the next step, or is that?
Or they may want to, they may want to talk to their council and kind of decide, I think they should probably sift through the facts and make sure they understand. You know, they know exactly what all the, the facts that are knowable are. I wanted to add this a little bit off, I think the board of county commissioners should vote to accept that resignation, it should be accepted.
Okay.
And uh, it's not a hundred percent clear to me whether the resignation, who has to be accepted. Because the statute of law is clear, maybe it could be, but I think the board of county commissioners should accept.
I only have one other question. Former treasurer that was in there. Brother favorite, you guys, in January resigned. Now, she was staying on a little bit to help do the payroll for him. Where she resigned, she has no vote no more, correct?
Yeah, I, I'm going to suggest that the board not get into answering legal hypotheticals from. Anybody.
Who makes that call, who you have to talk to?
Well, I guess ultimately, of course, I think that this is.
Anybody at the state level?
I'm not aware of any state agent, you know, townships have it difficult because there's no, you don't have any lobbying. Group that I know of, I don't think there's any state association of township officials or anything like that, I mean. Township officials work in relative isolation, I guess, but.
But they still have these proper channels that commissioners have to do, everything that you voted on approved.
The, the, the board of county commissioners does not have authority to punish a township official for. Misappropriating township property, if that happened, I'm not saying it did happen. Uh, and I'm not saying it didn't happen, I don't have any idea, but the board of county commissioners doesn't have any authority there. And I, they're just, you're just opening yourselves up for trouble if you answer it one way or the other. I should stay out of it, it does not involve the board of county commissioners, it's the township that.
Thank you. Quick question, um, before calling for a motion on this letter of resignation, is it template for Barton County, is it okay?
I, I don't think you need to change it, I think it was certainly intended.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to accept the letter of resignation, resignation. Um, that states I, Leo Nowinski, township trustee of Walnut Township. Do hereby tender my resignation from the aforementioned township board effective. July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, signed this twenty-first date of July twenty twenty-three, signed by Leo Nowinski. Um, and his reasoning is other board members are preventing me from doing my job correctly, do I have a motion to approve his letter of resignation? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Absence three to zero and we'll just sign the bottom of this letter that we acknowledge that we've received that. And I guess we want to probably date it today too, seven twenty-five.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck with everything.
So I have a few more things I just wanted to walk through from my inbox to get clarification, um. Joe, this might be for you, on the address signs that are being put up. Can the public purchase one and have it put up at the end of a road? Um, here's an example, I have it pulled up on my map and it was asked, when you go two sixty-two. West, under the underpass, Osage Road is the road. So in order to get up there, like, it, the point of them is to make it easier on the emergency vehicles. So they're willing to buy a sign, they just wondered if they could purchase a sign and you could put it. Or they could put it either way, right there, so that when the, they come under the underpass, they know, hey, here's the.
Almost like an arrow.
Maybe ask less.
Okay.
What is, if there, I don't know if there's some legal thing.
Yeah, I didn't know it either, I just said, I would ask, because it totally makes sense, when you're coming under there, you can miss Osage quick, you know, pretty easy and.
And then if you go around the other side, it doesn't go through.
Yeah, and so they're just thinking of. Minutes on an emergency, trying to help. Minutes on an emergency, I was trying to help, so, okay, I'll clarify with them on that.
Sure, with an address on there, on site says Osage bigger than.
Wes is coming.
Oh, hi, he's on it.
So on those two addresses that you're referring to on those age road, um. I understand that situation and I've already talked to him about that and we have those two addresses flagged. In our database with dispatch that tells us if we're paged to those two addresses on that road, how to get there. So therefore he wouldn't.
An internal flag that they shouldn't have to worry about because they're aware of it.
Correct, so if my calls nine one one from those two addresses that are on that road. There's automatic notes on our CAD system and dispatch is going to send that out to the responders that are responding to it.
Okay, perfect, that'll, that, yeah, because she was just concerned of.
Anticipating the next question though is maybe if they wanted to have a sign there for UPS or postal service or any other additional services. Is there any reason they couldn't have a sign there? I mean, I'm anticipating it could be beyond the.
So for those purposes, that would be up to the county commission and Joe, because that's county right away, and if you want to allow them to do that, then you. Can. So if something happens to a vote, who's gonna replace it? That's why I'm saying that. So if say, say Joe, one of Joe's people goes through there and they're plowing snow and they knock over that sign, then the county gets to replace that sign. Or if there's an accident there.
So I'll, I'll visit with them, I think, I think knowing that we have it internally covered that, because emergency vehicles is what they're worrying about. And if they need something on their own property for the address to, hey, we're up here, you know, they can do something like that, but I don't think we as the county probably want to be involved in. For UPS or those purposes, yeah, but.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so, um, Mark had sent. The final twenty twenty-two audit, so that'll be put on the website.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, did we need to vote on the parade for Effingham? Did you want?
We've discussed it.
Yeah, and I didn't realize it was next week.
Yeah. Yeah, it's coming quickly.
I'm not for sure I'm gonna be able to prepare in the parade.
Okay.
Uh, next week I have a lot of things going on and it won't be, will be remote next week through your commission meeting too.
So what are, what plans do we have? Are we gonna have flyers ready or we gonna?
Well, I have some, a good rough draft of information on flyer sheets.
Awesome.
I can show you what it looks like real quick.
You're fine, are you gonna be available to walk? Last year we walked and it was nice, I thought, did you, I mean.
I, I think it was fine.
Yeah.
I'm all for, my problem is my son's being deployed to Hawaii and that's the only about three day window we have to see him and his wife before I leave. So I'm gonna be tied up with my son.
Okay.
I'll be out there on Tuesday.
Okay.
That can't be there on great night.
Okay.
On the great night, yeah, we usually had a vehicle, so that was another thing, or we're gonna just take one of county vehicles and not worry about borrowing one from.
Cause last year, remember they had all the candy and the hatchback of the traverse? And then we just walked behind and could get like extras and pass out candy and the flyers, yeah, and they had cups and different things of like. Just.
Yeah, um, I think, remember you had some breakfast weed.
So I was still.
Yeah.
Looked up some stuff.
So do we need to send into the parade then that?
Yeah.
Or, or entry? Okay.
So the flyer, um, I kind of just use the same layout that's last year a little bit. Um, I came up with the twenty twenty-three. Portion of the budget that shows the levy and like county clerk, how much of the taxes on a hundred thousand dollar property go to that and. Maintenance and county counselor and road and bridge and all of the, the departments. Um, replaced, there was a. Recommendation to replace the logo, so I did that. Um, there was. And then I changed this, tried to, it's not done, um, but. Tried to make it less busy, um. Still supplying information about our departments, like achievements, what's coming and cool things that we've done. I've gotten some feedback, um, there's, there was a recommendation to put something about Abraham Lincoln up here. Um, so I was gonna get some information and do that, I have emergency management stuff, registered deed stuff, IT and GIS stuff. And then just for filler, um, if I didn't have enough information for this page, I put all of the department heads and the department, like who's who.
I think solid waste project would be very good to put on there too, just, I mean, that's something happening right now and. What Stacy wants to put on there, you know. Up to her, but that with the tire sharp, uh, cutter and there's things happening where the public, I think would be.
For the big city roads.
Morton Road, the striping.
Yeah, that's strapping.
That's, that's been big.
Well, when you say that last night at the farm bureau, like every person thanked me for that.
Yeah, I, I got that when I was at their earlier, uh, that makes his house there when they had the farm bureau, that's everybody's like.
Spice drive, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, so.
Uh, how, do you still want these passed out in the parade then? And how many do you want?
How many we had last year?
Well, we had leftovers last year and then we just put them at the courthouse and like, so. I wanna see it, let's.
Didn't buy the other thing.
Yeah, it was.
Through or hand or outers on your side, because when you walk up to those best stuff, but it's not like throwing candy.
No, absolutely, and that's how we did last year.
Last week.
And people were very, yeah, received it well though.
Yeah, but it was hard for the walkers to keep up, it goes afraid because. Yeah, the phrase go on here and here.
And there's so many people.
I got like three or four entries behind.
So did I. Oh, yeah, we should start ahead.
Yeah, just let him go, but five minutes with great start, just go.
That's a good point, yeah, cause we did end up about three back, I think that's what the tractors.
Yeah.
But you guys should just be, uh, waving the holler and stuff, he gets so good, well, pass out, that'd be great. So, but it's hard.
Do we wanna have Jody send out a countywide email about anyone that wants to participate?
Yeah, cause last year they showed up in their county shirts and like walked and kids are welcome and it was fun. Okay, so that. The local assistance on tribal. Assistance fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you sent us an email about that.
I did, so that was, um, federal dollars that it's similar to our but that we could apply to work. Um, accent was awarded. A hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars per tranche.
Okay.
So we received our first fifty thousand dollars last year. And now we've just, I just applied for the second fifty thousand dollars and we haven't received it yet. Uh, but as soon as we do, I'll let you know. So that would be a total of a hundred thousand that we can use similar art, because we cannot use it for lobbying.
So you can use it for anything but that, that's awesome, thank you. Okay.
We just have to do some reporting on it, kind of like what we do for our for now, so. And there has not been any talk of. Taking that money back. So. That there's not been.
Are you talking about this fund or the ARBA?
This fund.
Has there been anything else on the ARBA? I've, I've been quiet.
I hope that.
That was a topic last night though, um, at the farm bureau dinner was our, our allocation that how we had allocated the two million for the road and bridge facility. And just really, um, everybody thinks that, I mean, they see the need, know it's a need, um, and I just put it in. Out to them like, hey, if you know of any potential areas and lands, like let us know, because we're. We're trying to seek the best location and we talk through, you know, the perks of having areas with infrastructure and not, and all the things that we have to think about. Um, but also our business has to be allocated by twenty twenty-six and I know we're only in twenty twenty-three, but it's gonna be here before we know it, so, um, any. They were gonna put their feelers out and, and kind of let us know if, if they have anything. Um, okay, so fair, we talked about that. And then you guys were floating, I know you and Pat were working on the RFP for the auditing services.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So one of the big things. That I altered with the RFP is in twenty nineteen was the last one that we done. And if the point of contact was Michelle, so for this one, I've added. Myself to that, so it's Michelle and myself. Just for have another person on it, I guess, is the only reason. So I added that and then there was some language we were changing about. Deadlines and such dates, uh, and there's one option that Pat and I have been back and forth about. Is requiring, what, what do we require when we get the proposal from the paper, it's electronic, how do they submit it? Making sure they get it submitted to the proper person. So we're, we're just thinking about that, we wanted to discuss like a portal, like they could just put it into a port. But then making sure that that firm didn't see somebody else's firms proposal, so it had, would have to be private. And I was gonna, we just had this discussion yesterday, I was gonna look into. What applications, I guess, that there weren't for portals like that, or if email was sufficient, or if they just wanted. Paper copy, once we get a paper copy, we have to scan it all in, as we should have it electronically, so it was just.
Yeah, I would say give them electronic format, just set my formation right in. Have some document, you might submit it places to, and the auditors may say, I'll go do it this kind of file.
Yeah, we're still working on it. Like it done soon, so as we don't have a current auditor for twenty twenty-three, our agreement ended with more CPA from twenty twenty-two, which just completed.
Let's express the interest to continue.
I have the copy of the final letter on that L A B C R support, um, so. Not sure if you guys, it's the letter is a template and it's the board of our, it's coming from the board of county commissioners. So I will share that with you guys to review and then we can maybe put that next week to talk about if we wanna. Submit that. And they're also gonna have, um. More toolbox things in the coming weeks that they're gonna share with, with us, through K A C.
You know, getting ready for next year's legislative session, I guess.
I have a couple things.
Yeah.
Next week, I have, we have our meeting on the third, on Thursday, is that?
Right.
That's so unusual, I want to make sure that we get that out there, let our people know, I want to make sure that. It's the same time.
I caused that problem, sorry.
Same, same time and everything, only it's on Thursday instead of Tuesday. Make sure, get that. And then earlier we were discussing our calendar and was it the twenty-second that we were asking whether we should even have a meeting that day? Alan.
Right, right, it's gonna be a staff gone, so, I mean.
What?
I'm okay having a meeting.
Yeah.
But do, with a lot of staff meeting, do we want to call a shorter meeting or just want to leave it alone and just be here till one and? Leave it a regular meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
It's probably.
I just, we mentioned it, I wanted to check. Um, have we heard anything more on the Lincoln statue? On the ownership? Oh, um, I did, I did reach out to. Yeah, I'll lead it, can she, she did respond, uh, she made clear that she does not claim any interest in it. Um, I've sent her. Formal donation, consign and return, I haven't heard back from, from that. But she. In her email was clear that she does claim the ship interest in it.
Okay.
So, sorry, yeah, I still think we should have something writing something.
Sure.
So it's memorialized for future conventions. Uh, we had had another kind of inquiry from, uh, is it carrot? That about as to where we were at with the. You know, before they insure it.
Um, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, so has, did anyone respond to him like we're working on it, or maybe we should have some kind of acknowledgement that. Okay, we're trying to get things clarified.
I, I reached out and told them that we are still trying to get at our.
Okay.
Ownership that we had, um, the whole thing will be directed to. You know, patient.
Okay, good, because I thought, I know I hadn't responded, I've been made privy to that, so I just want to make sure that people. Need to be acknowledged, thank you.
On meetings, August twenty-ninth, I am gone, uh, three days, middle of the week there, which is all for leadership, I was thinking. So I will gone that day.
Just hold one with just us two then, I mean, there's no need to, there's no.
I've got that Monday morning, I can move a meeting or episode, I'm, I'm, I'm good, you guys are.
And when is, when are our budget meetings? What did we say they were? Did I have that?
That was one, one thing I had emailed, um. Uh, what was it?
I thought the eight, one.
And I don't really think we need to meet with all of them. I mean.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. I, I don't think we need to meet with all of them, yeah, I agree, I think we can come up with. Who we still have questions for and then, and then also talking.
That thing, the date we talked about was.
I think it was today and then the eight.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I don't think we'll need all that time.
I have Sherry coming out, Sherry from the county attorney coming out at one.
Oh.
Unless it's free to be here at one thirty.
Oh.
And if you need to.
Today.
Today. And if you need to, I can go through my.
Wherever it's like go.
Yeah, cause like for Joe and Cory, I don't think there's any need really. Um, to set them up, HR and deeds both hit.
Yes.
What they were supposed to, I mean, what we asked for, so I don't think there's need there either, I mean.
I'd agree. Rest them upon the eighth.
Yeah. Well, and joint communication, solid waste, I mean. They've given us, I don't know if you guys have more questions for them. Um, and same with, like honestly, I think some of the decisions will come down to our, us, I mean. Courts have told us what they need, I mean, there's no need to really bring people back and waste their time, I feel like it's kind of up to us to. To figure out, and then the same with the appropriations, you know, everybody was the same except two of them, so. You know, the fair increased three thousand and then extension eleven thousand and change, so.
And the, uh. Tiffany Hufman.
Oh.
It was another one that was requested, what, seven percent more?
Did, um, June tenth get ahold of you, anybody?
Yes, they are going to, would like to be at your meeting on the third.
Yeah, I talked to someone and I didn't realize and I, I think what I talked to was they were waiting for us to contact them again or something, I think maybe. So anyway.
I don't know, they were on the email.
So I could.
That went out, but that's okay, um, things get missed anyway, so they did contact me and. I don't know, they were on the email that went out, but that's okay, things get missed anyway, so they did contact me and she's on the third. And she knows that it'll be here. So she, I believe it's planning to come in person.
Did she expresses it the same request as last year, two thousand?
Yeah, yeah, when I talked to her. So Nicole?
Yeah.
I do have H R appraiser and registered deeds on for the eighth, so do you not want to speak to them or?
I think H R solid.
Yeah, and say.
First, talk with the new appraiser.
So yesterday, Jody and I visited with a new appraiser and I wanted, only because I wanted to give her like a heads up of what happened with the budget and what's going on with it, for her to have time to look at it, to review the numbers, to see if she has any problems with it or whatever. It was reduced lower than twenty twenty-three numbers. So she was, when we left yesterday, she was gonna take a week to look at it and then visit with me about any changes, so, okay. We kinda shared with her where we were at and the process of the budget. This was outlined from her department and I knew that yesterday was the first day and we didn't want to overload her with a lot of stuff, so she's gonna take time.
Yeah, I don't think there's a need for H R and deeds, I mean, they both hit that.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, they're busy, they have things to go to do.
On the sheriff, and I believe that there he had reduced, but I don't remember ever seeing what was reduced, or I didn't remember seeing anything all day.
I just saw his spreadsheet he sent us.
Yeah, it was reduced, but I'm not for sure exactly what.
Still, I probably wanna hit that again, that's a big, big department, I think.
It wasn't all the way down to the previous level.
No, but it was. Yeah.
Which we took from him too.
Right. What was that last we took from him?
From the ARPA will be hit last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He gave up capital.
I didn't, I didn't follow that.
Same with the E M N I T.
And I know that it's complicated to plug in all those, but there would be some way of having an estimate of that kind of where we're.
Yeah, yeah, no, I plan to do that this week.
Okay, cuz that will help a lot too when we see in the scope of things.
How is that though? Don't, shouldn't we give you some type like, I guess I don't, when Jamie used to do it too, she would explain like you did, like it's a lot of work to go in and like plug it and then replug it, but understanding kinda where we are in. I mean, I think I'm, I know we're gonna exceed R and R, like period, like it, it, it is a thing. However, we had to set some ground rules for everyone, and so now that we've had that chance to visit with people, it's like, okay, now it's kind of up to us to make the decisions of how we wanna, what proceed with, who's exceeding. And I mean, I'm just gonna throw out like Cory EMS, I'm in favor of his eighty-nine thousand dollars, I don't think he was, had fluff anywhere and he's running our ambulance service and, you know, so, so that's one that he went back to the drawing board and reduced eighty thousand dollars, but at, at who's, you know, who's hurdle, cuz it's, it's, it's public, you know, you have to.
When you're thinking on something like that, so that's pretty close to half a mill. And then that would change what gets put into the, the county workbook, which then takes all of the, the numbers and spits it out to what our bill levy will be over R and R mill levy. So I think if you guys are in agreement to give him that eighty-nine back, he needs to go put it back into the software so that we can get new numbers, so that I can take those new numbers and put it into the county workbook. Because currently what's in the county workbook is his revised.
Right.
Cuts.
Yep.
Which doesn't include that half a mill increase.
And I really appreciated him coming to the public meeting, cuz I've had more people say, well, listening to Cory, like, you have to exceed R and, like, you know, and it's like, yes, we, we see that, but like, when you're talking about twelve plus department, like, you have to set ground rules somewhat, or we have to be completely individualized and, and make that call after we meet with them, you know, one-on-one.
I think it's still very telling and interesting when, when we say that and it's like, okay, what would this look like if? Kinda dot, 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 so you see what is necessary to get down to those figures and where the absolute rock, rock bottom is for that department, it's like, I cannot go any further than that. Then there is no wiggle room either. But.
I don't know how you got, I mean.
Completely back to the eighty-nine, or do we wanna?
I recall it's up again, I would, I would think so. I think when I was on that, you were on that board with me there for a while, the equipment was so outdated. Every unit service life, so now the, the main ambulance is like, we're in great shape, especially since one coming up, so that's all good. It's all supporting equipment that they're starting to, okay. So a lot of us really, it's all good, but some of us getting to the age where it's time to replace it, and so I think we stay with the plan of the year or two. And then it'll be like super good.
Yeah.
We don't wanna slow down now.
Well, and his call volumes are reflecting all of that. Yeah, it's, and I, you know.
This medical complexity is up, I mean, people years ago when they got sick, it wasn't as complicated, it's complicated to me. Medical histories are complex and the communicable disease aspect is complex, so it's, it's not as like it used to be.
Well, and with, when he's explaining to us his call volumes and how his staff's running, you know, three ambulances and all the things, like I don't want him to have to reduce the number because, you know.
Right.
It is what it is, but.
It's hard to predict.
I'll go along with that, so.
I guess I can email to Cory with you three on it, letting him load it, revert it back to what.
The original proposal.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with that.
And please thank him for leadership and being willing to come and present with us at open meeting and.
I would like to share back here, I agree, cuz well, it's through communications to see how we're doing there, they changed through employees, they have raised progress. So the back budget, fill those spots.
Then you was after sharing.
Was, which I wonder if he could come before, and we have. So maybe if you could just go down through and like amongst the three of us, like if somebody has extra questions, they can say it and then we'll know who we need to meet with and who we know.
Yeah.
Just so we have a, is that okay, rather than?
Okay, so first on the list of county commission, it is twelve thousand and ninety-seven dollars less than twenty twenty-three. Then next is court election. Court is twenty-three thousand three forty-seven above. And elect thirty-six thousand, seventy-three above. And excellent list is county general, it is thirty thousand five hundred votes, that is an increase for K Camp insurance and for appointed attorneys. Contract increases. Director's office, thirty-five thousand seven twenty above. When I reached out to her, she had indicated there really was a compromise to reduce her budget, it was all personnel and contractual services for publications.
Yeah, I want to talk to her again.
Okay, so yes, on the treasure?
Yeah, I'm kinda clerk going, Dr. Schleswig.
Okay. Okay. Next on the left, the county attorney, forty-four thousand five eighty-one above, which, which is kind of today.
And what was, is that her original above, or is that after she reduced?
Um, I think that's the original.
Okay. Nope, that's all I wanted. Yeah, that'll be it.
The registered deeds is zero dollars above. Courts at six thousand seven ninety above.
That's her second.
That's their second, yeah.
And what was their original above?
I think there's eleven thousand.
That's perfect.
Yeah. Well, and I, I mean, I feel like she gave us the justification enough that I would go with her original request, I mean, for she, she was very thorough when she met with us on, on what she needed, because she's trying to move everything forward and scanning and all things and.
But if we think there's additional funding, we don't necessarily have to go back completely, I mean, we could put, like, you know, so much. And that way we, yeah, not give a hundred percent of that.
Like on hers, it's a lot of new computers at once.
Yeah.
But you pay for it five years later.
Yeah.
Or three years or so.
All at once.
Good example stagger, so yeah, so we can talk about that.
Okay, so yes, on the courts.
Okay, uh, next is appraiser, twenty-five thousand nine fifty-seven below. So with it being below, that's why I wanted to have Holly look at the budget, see what she got, especially coming from her prior position. She had a little bit more knowledge of what it would take.
We need to have her in anyway.
I would, yeah, and I would love to hear her side of, like, what her thoughts are.
Jody really wanted her to be here today, but with her being absent, she had talked to Holly about being here next week, so I think when it comes next week. Um, maintenance is down three thousand five fifty-three. County counselor is zero change. Human resources is up two thousand twenty-seven dollars. Two thousand, that is the employee appreciation that was moved from the county commissioner along the. Emergency management is up sixty-five thousand dollars even, that was added back in from the R and R reduction last year. Juvenile detention is down fifteen thousand dollars. The county attorney may be able to speak for that one, if she thinks it should stay at thirty thousand or if it's okay to come down to fifteen. I think before she had said, you know, it just depends on the cases, what comes up. Last year, we didn't touch it at all. So she's like, you can reduce it, but if something comes up, she has to fund it, so I don't know, we play it safe and try to keep it the same, or we can reduce it, but apparently it's reduced to fifteen thousand. EMS, that's, it, it reduced it to nine thousand over, but if, if we go back to eighty-nine thousand above.
Say that again.
He, when we asked him to reduce it, he reduced it to nine thousand dollars higher. And then we just had the conversation, so he would put it back to original budget, which would be eighty-nine thousand dollars.
I, I had the wrong.
I T G I S is up fifty-three thousand three twenty-two. He's adding back in fifty-seven two ninety-three from the R and R production. So it appears that if he's adding back in fifty-seven two ninety-three and he, he's up fifty-three, three twenty-two, he must have reduced something in his budget.
Over last year.
Over last year, yeah.
Read those numbers off again.
Yeah, so he's adding back in fifty-seven thousand two ninety-three from the R and R, what he, what he had to give up. Um, and then currently with his budget, he's up fifty-three thousand three twenty-two. So since he's up lower than what he added back yet, he reduced four thousand seventy-one dollars somewhere else. Noxious weed, we just heard from Joe, he reduced that twenty something thousand, twenty-five thousand, I believe.
Noxious weed, noxious weed, thirty-seven thousand. What it?
And didn't have time to update the spreadsheet, but his new sheets here, yeah, so he's down twenty-two thousand nine sixteen. Home for the age, which is that ten thousand dollar budgeted line item. And Pat's touched on it before, uh, since we have the senior village nursing home. That is no tax burden on property taxes, this is our way of contributing, that the county is levying something on behalf of that, right? Add it's like a good, good faith effort to. I, I probably did not word it the way that you put it, but.
So then futuristic, if we don't own senior village, then that would be, okay, perfect.
Um, next is the sheriff, he is up two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred. But I believe a hundred and seventy-five thousand of that is what he's adding back in from the reduction of R and R. Road and Bridge, it's up nine hundred and seventy-two thousand eight thirty-seven, just heard from Joe, about his road plan. County Lake, it's up fifty-eight hundred dollars, which we just heard from Joe, which is.
Okay. That's where, again, like that comes in, the road and bridge of nine hundred and seventy-two. That's, it's not up nine hundred and seventy-two, it's just.
Right, right.
So.
Five hundred and sixty-six thousand of that is the bond.
Bond payment that was in a, just a different spot that got moved in.
Yeah. So I can, I said I was gonna do it and I didn't do it, but I can break that down, do like a little divot out to show about five hundred and sixty-six, it's not.
I think that's very important.
No, if I was, just have a a little separate fund that's for the bond, bond debt.
So that's what we have, we have a bond of interest, which was one thirteen.
Yeah.
So we moved it out last.
So we wanted it to be transparent, because the only thing that was in there was Roden Bridge.
And Roden Bridge didn't even know about.
Well, they didn't know really how that was funded, yeah, it's like.
I don't think it's about being transparent, obviously. Budgets, my accounting standpoint.
Well, I think once we get it here, then it won't be a problem, because next year it won't be a change. But it's that transition year, now it's being added in, it looks like, you know, why are we spending that much more? We're not, we, that is.
It is for a bridge, I guess, I, you're getting away, but okay, it's fine.
I, I think it's a growing pains issue, but for this year, we gotta be able to explain it.
Well, yeah, if somebody would have a bond or debt on some other department at some point, I guess, it's better, same with this department, so.
Okay, but it's also, uh, uh, over the whole budget, it's gonna show where things are being spent.
Yeah.
And cuz bond and interest, it's like, who would know what it was being?
Right, and that's the last part.
Okay.
So I've got clerk, appraiser, courts, appraiser, and sure.
And I would like, I think maintenance would be good to have a conversation with him, because we also allocated that ARPA for courthouse repairs and just having that whole understanding of what Brian's thoughts are for twenty twenty-four and how, like what he is budgeting for, yeah, yeah. And then EMS, it might not be bad just to have a conversation with Cory, because he was explaining the revenue piece to him, to me too, and I would like to better understand that, like I know it's not part of this, but it is when, when we're talking about what he's budgeting. And if you're thinking, you know, not all the way, have a conversation of, of meet in the middle, I don't know, I just, I marked in, yes. I have, I have a yes for I T G I S sheriff. Um, and then the revenues again on emergency management, just to understand a little bit more about what those are, uh, which we can have that at the same time.
I T debt is coming today.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, but I was just trying to go through, uh, but really no on H R, no on county councilor, no on road and bridge. No on deeds.
And, and lock on, uh, emergency management or ambulance. Ambulance, the. Income really, you don't get credited for that.
I know, well, and that's the same with the sheriff and the federal inmate, and like, understanding, that's one thing for me. Is like being able to explain that of understanding, like, these guys are doing this job and they're bringing in revenues for the county.
All the revenue is reimbursable.
And understanding where, like, where those revenues are, because like, so if we ask them, cut your budget. Okay, sure, I can cut my budget, but then it's gonna affect the revenues. So then it's like, well, is that the smart thing that we're asking of them, but we have to understand it, right? It's like, understand what that means.
EMS, you know, I don't, doesn't, I'm just gonna assume, make a wild guess, but. Most likely, if every single person they transported paid full fee, that they bill that, we may not have to give them any money.
Correct.
No, I mean, it's just, that's not the world, though.
When you get other things involved, like entrances and Medicaid and all that.
Non, non-paid.
Yeah, and, you know, we can offset any expenses with any of that.
Yeah.
But if I repeat it, you can.
If his revenues grow on the service side with the increased costs, it may.
Right.
Reduce the pressure on how much we have to do. Right, so that's a, that's, you know, one thing.
And if you take, like EMS, for example, um, the income to expense. There's not enough income to offset the expenses anyway at this point.
He's a service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same with the sheriff, he couldn't build the place, federal inmates, it's still may not be, you know.
Well, I think that's good. I'm gonna use the restroom, I'll ask.
I'll be, whatever I want. Make a motion to the segment. I think, I think we're pretty much in agreement, uh. Clerk, treasurer, courts, praiser. Share slash jail size, drug communications, that's one, and then maintenance. Casey, Mr. IT, Wes is coming in, so, uh, I think that's it. And we have time today to talk about your stuff, and we'll do it next time. Posting up the voting machine options for assistance costs then. Check on that, so. Get an update.
I've been doing.
Well, that's probably a timing issue, going to get it.
Yes.
We have no something to make a decision, so, that's, that's doable, that'd be awesome, I mean. It's also a year away, quit using. Right, so. Yeah, that's what we should think.
Oh.
There's one that's ten thousand.
Oh, no, 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 it's that, yeah, yeah, I got your email.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the ten thousand was the original, then up to that, right?
Yeah, right, but they were both.
Oh, yeah, we got the little one, yeah.
Actual check.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Every checkers, right?
I thought it was a check. How many are this?
Several.
Oh, yeah, you would have to put your initial and each.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, usually there's a match. Yeah.
Will be signed, so we.
She had me do one at the beginning. Of like a template, and then she kind of says it electronic, however she does it, I don't sign, like she does it for me. Thank you.
Somehow they.
I think that's our bigger.
Voters.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yeah, I'm crazy. I hope I don't, oh, yeah, give you a chairman, sorry.
That's all. I just heard my voice.
No, it's getting worse.
Wow.
Mark, did you see senior village?
Oh, yeah. I, uh. Asked Lindsay. If she would. Give us an update on collections. Um, just to know whether it was being. Updated with payments, I know that there was. Some wires from the treasury's office. Um, maybe more being collected all of them. So. We'll see.
That what wasn't being.
Like the, the wires that the treasury's office sends out, like, when it comes into the bank account.
Right.
Uh, for Medicare or Medicare cases.
They're just sitting out there?
Yeah, so it's just, I wanted to make sure that Lindsay had the BOM actively looking and making sure that. Those weren't senior village. Um, typically, they. Will be senior village, um. Because the EMS department always collects those all the time. There isn't any other. Payments from Medicare, Medicaid, that we would receive. It either has to be EMS or senior village. It's just. Ensuring that they stay on top of. The claims, the money they.
You want these?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, so we are gonna start with our budget questions, discussions, thanks for joining us, um. So Wes is first, uh. Not for emergency management, we added back to, or you added back in the sixty-five that you, um. Were gracious enough to give up last year, um, to hit the R and R. One of the things I would like to understand is the emergency management grant on the revenue side of things, what, so you write a grant each year?
So each year, I apply for the emergency management performance grant, and that's where we have to. Achieve a bunch of goals throughout the year, um, and then if we achieve those, we'll get that money, what that money is set aside for is. Funding or EOC, which is this room, and then we can use it per wages if there's extra, but we have to put in without a grant and, um. And then we can also, um, fund our emergency management office or thing. Um, but there's restrictions on how you can do that, because it's federal money, um, so we can't typically do it against wages, um, because. I'm going to apply this year, or here in September is the deadline, to twenty twenty-two's funds. So when I used to, when I used to do this, when I, when I first started, you get the grant money in the same year that you were performing on. But now they are so far behind that I'm just now applying for twenty twenty-two funds, so you can't do, we can't do wages on that because. It already happened, it's already happened, we've already closed our books. I know, right, so, um, there used to be on the current, um, and then we were always, if we can get that money before December or January. Um, but now they're so far behind, it's not even an option. So we use, I use, I pay for Code Red with that, which is our county notification system. Um, anything needed for this room is funded through there, um, and if. If we had, like, I can purchase my computer printer for my office out of there, but it's limited on what, what you can use it for. So typically, how much do we get? Uh, twenty thousand five sixty. So. Not sure if we're really gonna get it this year, though, this coming year, because we didn't have our quarterly LPs came this last year. Because I was trying to catch up with everything else, um, but we'll see, I'll, I'll still apply for it.
Because of that behind of funding, do you ever worry they're just gonna be away with it? I mean, that seems weird, right, as like, why they're giving funding from the every, like, that seems bizarre.
Yeah, so we don't count on it, we don't, we don't rely on it to be there, so if it ever. Does disappear, and then the fund which has a balance for. Fifty thousand-ish, I think.
Oh.
So I have a buffer, so when, if that grant goes away and that, then I need to clean that fund, then we'll have to start budgeting for Code Red and. That's true.
Okay, so there's an emergency management fund, just in case, which.
There's an EPG fund out there, yeah.
Okay.
That that money goes into.
Now, is that money that's built up over time with the same source? Okay, so it's all the same rules.
Yeah, years ago, we were able to offset salaries open.
Does anybody have questions on that?
Totally, let, let Phil for you. Been traveling and being around and stuff, a lot of emergency centers like this, where the equipment's coming out of the highway, there's. You know, we'll see, fly down here to stop traffic or to caution, probably.
Love that.
And that's, well, and I've seen, I've seen it, they, they obviously, you don't even see that. You, is that a K dot thing, is that?
West of that, turn K dot, it's their highway.
Right.
Um, and it's been four or more years ago since we've done that, um, and they said they should put up. Signs, but that never happened. Um, and we asked for it, stop by, and they. They declined it, so.
I think you're flashing your loans or something, anything, good, so.
Yep, I can reach out to our area office again, um, and see if that changes our mind. So we, we asked for a current lane, too, if we can do it, uh. Currently on the hard part, to make it easier, because ambulance is coming and the emergency services coming out of town, and you have to stop because there's traffic headed in the city. And several times, I have a long video that our ambulances and or emergency vehicles have almost been rerouted by semis or large trucks. Cars to me, but me too, that's, yeah, yeah, so, so I put my bleeder on, I'll have my back.
Yeah.
People aren't, uh, paying attention, we'll flip on emergency lights, but like, I was an accident doing that, so, right.
I'm gonna send you a copy of a card, last night at the meeting, um, Don Hughes just took a new position with K dot for this safety.
Really?
So, yes, he gave me his card, and he's like, here, if you need something.
I have all of his information, so I'll just call him.
Yeah, go reach out to him, and I'll, I'll still send you, because he gave me his K dot card, so you have his work email and all the things. But he might be a perfect person that can make this happen.
It's been, at least a couple of years ago, I know there was talk with the city when, there's K dot discussions regarding. Actually going for him and the bridge was finished, and that was mentioned in four, and he's passed, um, his first elevator here. Yeah, funny, just get. So the bigger conversation might be, hey, we can do that, if that's, if that's in the plan, let's find out.
There was even talks with, um, several city commissioners, I think you were one of them, about how the city might be able to lower this gate out here.
Yeah.
Because we're trying, like, but still on the city limits.
Right. And which.
Well, even if it went to three lane with a turn, designated turn, like, that huge chip.
Right, but that alone, probably figure a lot of it, but they wanted to turn that puppy, and they're getting ready to do some other groups out there, so. Yeah, now it's gonna have that conversation, I think, the tracker, it looks definitely up.
It is, it is about, and people are, I mean, it's only fifty-five right in front of us until. Actually, it changes sixty-five right, right here, I think, yeah, some people are doing everybody sixty-five, and the semis, it doesn't look like it, but. When, from when they turn the hill at the junction, or when they turn the corner at the junction head this way, it's an uphill the whole way, it doesn't look like it is, so they're standing behind it. And I mean, they don't, their foot never comes off the floor because they're trying to get up to speed, yeah, because really it's uphill. So you're about to pile outside.
Still great, yeah.
So they're, they don't let off the gas. Sorry.
No, and you have any other questions? Okay.
Sorry to digress, but I wanted to throw that out.
I agree, we'll, we'll address it again, see what we can.
Okay, um, I had a couple of questions on IT, uh, under capital outlay, there was emergency equipment failure, so is the fifteen thousand still in that?
Uh, no, so. I set them back to twenty twenty-three numbers, like the commission said, except for personnel, um, so. That money that's in there, the, the nine thousand some odd dollars, is actually going to have to cover. Our HSA expense, healthcare expense, because all those will be, be an over budget, so that's what that's for.
Okay, sorry, I'm not, sorry, I'm not following, on the, on the capital outlay line item.
Correct.
Okay, so maybe I'm, I'm looking at the right version, eighty-four thousand nine four, nine seventy, sorry.
Correct, so, and I, I tried to pick an emergency, I brought that line out, but the, there is nine thousand dollars extra in that line item. That will have to cover health insurance, HSA expense, boy, benefit, campus, K P and F, campus life insurance, FICA, and. That's all, because those are all, those will all be in upper budget by setting our numbers back to twenty twenty-three numbers.
So we have nine thousand extra in capital to cover all of those?
Yeah, because you said, in the email, said, prefer it to twenty twenty-three, buddy.
Same.
Can you use capital outlay for?
No, I'd love to do a general transfer to those five line items to, to make them not negative.
And you, would it be better to lower that one than increase the other ones? You know, set it back to twenty twenty-three budget.
I think we're just talking about the total, not, like, you can manipulate within how you feel.
Oh, then, yeah, I need to move nine thousand dollars.
Which that makes a lot more sense, I'm like, why are you, uh, uh, like, lowering? What is happening?
That's why I put on, on the balance, or was this, or reduced to this, was this, or just.
Okay, no, yeah, we were, sorry, we were just.
Uh, yeah.
A total, that would be the general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Total lot, and then.
Very miscommunication, that was, I wasn't clear enough.
Okay, so, yeah, then we need, I'll have to look those. And set those back. And register that one.
And then the only other one is that, um, reflecting the eighty-eight hundred dollar savings for the rainbow switch, um, under the telephone. When we, I, I did bring my backup, because I didn't know we're doing, sorry, yours today, but when we switched from. AT&T to Rainbow, it was saving us, and, uh, as like, since we just implemented it finally this year. It hadn't taken effect, the savings, so I was just wondering, should it be reflected in the budget for twenty twenty-four, because now that we are seeing it?
I wanna make sure and see it first.
Okay.
I don't wanna get to, oh.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, from what we signed off on, on the PO, it said it was gonna save us X amount of dollars, which ended up equating to like eighty-eight hundred dollars a year, so. Just, just.
Yes, so I want to see it first, because we are just now switching, uh, or we just now finally canceled the eighteen ten, we're only paying, um, Rainbow now, so I want, I want to see that change.
Within the last month, or?
Yes.
But it should change, right? That's what they told us, and that's what we signed off on.
Correct.
Okay. So.
And that's. Also, if we don't add anything, this, every department. Every department has needs, and I can just magically make those needs happen, so as long as other departments don't. Add something that they need. Add something that they need. That we have to. That's in our state.
I. I'm not, that's just the way it's always been, but it's almost like an increase to their department at the expense of this department. So. I don't know how how we would track that or.
I mean, just for for instance, the um we did the. For citizens, the internet speed rate, I mean, the speed test, I mean, a lot of cost IT fifty nine bucks, but. We didn't have that in our budget, but we would stuck around to make it happen, but but stuff like that happens all the time. Two of the commission laptops are still owned by emergency management. That money was supposed to get transferred from the commission to emergency management. Oh, it happens. I mean, the only the only one that's actually been paid for by the commission was cases, that's what I'm trying to happen. The rest of these are owned by the E M P G grant that's supposed to fund our R E O C. So I mean. And that's like you guys reduced um your budget for the next year when it comes out for. Commodities for like office supplies will, the reason you didn't have that expenses because emergency management's been funding your printing and everything last. Year since you've been here, um or or stopped prior to that. So I mean, that happens across the board.
That stuff we don't see, I mean.
Yeah, which I've I've gotten much better, that's been my twenty twenty three goal of like less, but then but this is coming from.
Would it be more clear if we had a line item for? Uh interdepartmental or something like that, where you can dump those things into and actually. Realize those are more than departments.
Well, I mean, most of IT is for other departments.
Well, then we are sitting things like this. You know, yeah, we're retarded, obvious things are separate surprises.
I don't know whether I really need to track it, but it's kind of nice to be aware, especially at budget time.
Yeah.
You know, how this works, I mean, and when I say track it, I don't want to. And right, fifteen cents for a pencil, you know. No, I don't want that, but I mean, track it for as far as. You know, even if you have like a breakout, if it's like, I think fifteen percent of this budget is of my budget is for other departments or, you know.
I would say eighty percent of this budget.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I just pull in a number out, just trying to get my point across.
But also, like you have came to us before um with and and it was helpful, because like. With you not coming to us, we don't know what's being asked, and sometimes we might have to say no, and not you say no, but we say no to. Request because of the different situations, right? So just understanding that, um and then. As far as the computers under emergency management, like on the computer list, it said commission for or whatever. Are the ours under emergency management?
We we put them under your list, even though they were funded by the E P G grant.
Okay.
Because that's how, which track where they are and what they're.
And what they're being used for. Okay.
So, I mean, the one that's in the commission room. Was a used computer from some department, because we read purpose of them when we replaced them, we usually serve the senior village, or if they're still good enough to be used. Um for the ones that aren't, then we dispose of, or we have that stack of computers that we're going to. Sell to the public as soon as maybe it's a free time to make that happen. But like that one was a reused one. Just yours is owned by them, the other two were by. So, but we reuse a lot of computers, most of senior village computers are. Ones that have came out of other offices, that way you set up there because they don't have the funds to to stay up to date.
So if commission has extra funds at the end of the year, do we pay by the computers? Reimburse her, I mean, is that what the way we're thinking, or I mean, is that just a question or?
Right on the budget, so we should probably do the journal inquiry or whatever things to fix that, I think.
So, what was the original question asked, because we have talked so much, I lost it, I I lost what the original question was.
Telephone expensive.
No, we were past that, it was. Other departments. Expensive, but I remember how it came up. Talking about apartment meeting.
Tracking how you do department request, you just do it, so you don't know.
You know, there was. But there was a special line item you asked or something you asked about, and I said, well, I don't know, because. Oh, I missed, I'm sorry.
It's an idea.
Oh, we're past that, we're something else. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You don't need to apologize to us because we can't remember either.
So if that telephone expense should be going down, uh but you still want a little buffer, you mean, is it?
Maybe that's how it did, so so um I want to see that that expense comes down and that we don't have to add speeds, for example. Um we are going to try and do TLS. As we search for Rainbow, as we switch offices to over to Rainbow, we are going to try and do TLS, which is. Um instead of going using VPN routers at each location and you go out over the internet. Um and then back into the different locations, we're going to try and switch offices to TLS. Um which is where we rented dark fiber from Rainbow and our. It's a.
Becomes an issue.
It makes our county become an internet instead of going out of the dinner, that is a tad bit more expensive to do that. Um but is a whole lot more secure and someday we'll be able to get rid of. Seven thousand dollar routers at each location, um because we wouldn't need them anymore, so um around the area. I mean, so that's our plan, Rainbow's building, um to our office right now, we could switch it over at community corrections. Transfer station, I think. Those are the three so far. But as they build out, we will be able to hit the rest of our locations here in town, um so we hope to switch over to TLS. Instead of just internet packages, and those might be a wash, and they might be a tad bit more expensive than what we're currently paying.
Okay. It will be within the next year probably.
While I'm hoping to switch. Maybe corrections or or one of the offices first as a test pool, to make sure that everything's going to work correctly, probably that they have. Because that way, that's the least affected out there, um that location first or the transfer station. First, to see how it works and to make sure everything. Operates smoothly. What that'll do is it'll make everything much, much faster at your outline, so if you get on C I C. Um courthouse, it lies along because you're not going out over the internet, um if you get on C I C here, you click about any way. So it would make it almost the same as when you're at the courthouse when you're using our softwares.
So just curious, virus near my house now, nowhere near down, but it's in the neighborhood. So, as commissioner, could I, will I be able to get and have a. Rent a little space on the city or fiber idea, or something that just kind of facilities.
I personally think just kind of facilities, because we control our network, whereas we couldn't control what's in your house.
Okay.
You as a commission tell me to do something. Yeah, I personally don't think anybody's home network should be connected directly connected to. For security reasons.
Because we get a location, it's almost like have a satellite, whatever.
Yeah, cool. That it's. Your questions.
Anybody else? We can sit here and stare at each other, but.
Sometimes it takes a little while to kind of unwind that.
Yeah.
Bandage, we went. You know, it's it's good discussion, it's always seem like one thing feeds on another. Up in things that we really need to know.
I did redo. Three thousand nine hundred and seventy seven one, especially if that could be put into um senior village. As requested, um so if senior village would sell, then. Yes, the the three line items that I put on there. Would just go away. I do have some other expenses that we that are cost because of them, but those expenses would be able to just go away if. They.
Until they're gone.
Not even that.
Okay, so we're sorry, not expenses because of them, expenses you have that they utilize, but you have to have for other reasons.
Correct.
Got it.
Yes, that was a better way of describing what I said.
Yes.
But no, I saw that you removed the senior village expenses, so that's good.
And any other questions? I will fix this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your trainee's coming up one, and then we could do Michelle after that, like. About many on the eighth?
You run, there's a chance to, so I still have six, I think.
Yep, yes.
Boy manual for. Read through it, too much to look at it again. Over that.
Remember her son back?
Couple weeks ago, yeah, I should.
Oh, yeah.
But it's been a while. It's been a lot because of the immunizations we talked about last time. I wonder if that's in that manual.
Well, not that I can recall it now. You guys want to give more direction on appropriations for the fair or any of that? Or have you made your run or thought about it at all?
Well, I think the last time we discussed, we were gonna just leave it all, leave them all flat, I mean, from what my understanding was. I haven't changed from that.
I'm okay, give it a thrill, I'll pop, I'm okay, give it extension council, maybe even a half, but bad, I say. The district concept, they gotta be. But even now, they're gonna save money, private raise salary versus the new salaries, so probably give a little help there.
I'm not forgiving them anymore. I mean, last year, they got a substantial bump. In a in a year that was an R and R year, so we actually had to cut elsewhere to fund them more last year.
Which that was, I think a lot of good came from last year and the fact of. How we handled that, like, we switched it, so this year we took care of our own, you know, first of. It was county needs, like we hear them, but we haven't made decisions yet until. Because yes, you're right, we commit, like we had committed since the letters out, like. I think, wasn't that right? Like we had already committed to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Committed to them.
But that we were funding them at the level we decided, and then we had to. Alter the budget, so we only had internal alterations that we could make, which. It's good, like you learn, like your learning lesson of like, okay, now we do. The county needs and tell us where we're at, and then appropriations to follow and.
Well, but you know. And when they presented when they were here, before, early on, before YouTube were here, they made it sound like. Okay, we go to a district. And you know, it'll be efficient because we could. You may not need a food specialist, one for each county, so you can reduce your number, but you're sharing, but. That was, oh no, we need two per county, I mean, it was, it's not gonna. Be able to make more things efficient, because and like, instead of having five. Five per three counties, no, we gotta have six. Or uh agents. I mean, they they changed up what they were telling us that districting might do. Now it's just, we gotta have more, we gotta have more, we gotta have two per county. And before it was like, you shared, so you wouldn't need necessarily have.
And that's, that's been my understanding, and even talking to Kathy Tharman yesterday of. The vision, because her and her commissioners have kind of discussed what it would look like of, maybe you could share an ag agent. You know, amongst counties to where you're specialized in ag, I'm specialized in, you know, family consumer science, and then. You have that resource to where you're collaborating, working together, so not every county has to have an aggie.
Well, that's that's what she said today, though.
Yeah.
This would be the team for the whole three counties.
Yeah, and that's the.
But that would be six agents per three counties, right?
One, one person, we'd work two, three of those hands too. I mean, maybe wear more than one hat, so like one agent might be in charge of a couple of things. So.
They would, but they don't want to, they don't want less than two per county.
I didn't hear that.
The, because I I specifically asked them that when they presented the first, no, this year when they presented, and I said. Always before it was that you could be more efficient, and it's like, no, we want to offer more services, we don't want to cut down. And that's the reason they were chastising Brown County for being the one, because they chosen to only fund one agent. And no, that's not enough, and.
Well, I did go to a district just because it changes the whole scheme where they're accountable for what they do, if they're their own mill. And I'm sure it's formula has been set for how to put that together. Then it's not even a lot of concern.
Yeah.
I I agree with that.
And that's the right path, I think all, well, I know the agents do, and I'm looking forward to visiting with their commissioners, um. I think they see that that's the best path forward is working together and districting and. You know, finding those specialized people that we can share amongst, I think, because. That's the area that people travel, you know, Brown County, Donovan, and that descendants, and you'd still have your own fairs, you'd still have your own.
But there.
This would just be.
Ours is funded. How much more than what they were before? Even before we cut, I mean, they're they're getting more now than they were two years ago.
I want to say they were one forty or one forty one, and then we went down to eighty six, and then we bounced back up. To one forty four, right, and now they're looking at one sixty eight, is that right? But we, it was a significant reduction because of, I mean, because that's what we do, we represent the community, and they came out. So. Thanks for going.
We try a point out.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the county regarding?
Said we are. Something that we said we need to ask Jerry when she gets here, what was that?
Uh, your juvenile detention fifteen thousand reduction, is that? Do you think thirty thousand should be in there or?
I mean, I think the last time we talked about this. We were looking at historical figures, I don't know if we were able to find any trends with it.
That's, that's always been the same.
It hasn't, yeah, okay.
Sometimes we use it. To go, I discussed it with them, the new side of cases come up, we gotta use it.
And honestly, juvenile law has changed that. We really don't detain as much as we used to, but I would think that that trend should already be reflected in historical data. Yeah.
So, let me ask this question because when we roll over into a reserve from an elected official's budget. It stays because it's within their budget, so is a reserved. Item, something like above, like a buffer for the years that, oh goodness, we went over the fifteen that we budgeted. Is that?
I don't have it in my county attorney fund.
Okay, so it's, it's separate, okay, perfect, I, I was just gonna, I was just scared.
So we budget thirty for this year and then?
No, we're in dispute right now, I know that. Michelle was telling me and I think she got a hold of Pat, wasn't there something coming up about a juvenile cost right now that we thought? We thought DCF should pay it, but they sent us the bill and it was like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, Michelle talked to me about that, but I. I don't know enough of the specifics about it, because I believe it was a trial in DCF custody.
Right.
Yeah.
So. I don't know. Unknown, they sent us the bill, but we're trying to get DCF to cover it because that child lives in DCF custody.
Yeah.
So, but they said, no, we're sending you the bill, you guys figure it out, so that's kind of why we're out on that right now. We have detained a few juveniles though recently. I can think of two off the top of my head.
Where I was going then, well, it's, it's called a thirty thousand dollar reserve for that. At the end of the year, you needed twelve thousand of that, the next year you would send a twelve thousand back in.
Yeah.
That kind of a concept, however they approach the books.
Yeah, that's what I was. Not loving it every year over like, but, yeah, but having a case where, uh-oh, like we have.
We must have to be aware if something comes up that, yeah.
So you made a crazy year.
And I'm, I'm fine, I said it even the previous year, whatever you guys wanted to do with that. Historically, whatever those numbers turn out to be. Like I said, it's not in my main budget, so.
Sorry, I, I've asked Mark to send it to us, cause I did. Realize you were coming today, so I'm just trying to get my ducks in a row to have it in front of me as we have a conversation.
Did you find anything out about that truancy program?
Your contacts were. Less than helpful. But that's great.
Did Shelley know? Who paid it? It came out of Shelley's budget. The truancy program, that one got moved to my budgets, a year or two ago, last year, right? That was the first year and it's because Shelley Nelson, when she was the director of community correction, she said she was basically coming over here just for that truancy budget. Because she's funded her mistakes for grades and I, at one point I was asked to. If I minded, if it was rolled over into my funding and I said. Whatever is makes it easier for everyone, but ever since it's been rolled over, no one's told me. Pay it like how it's paid out. And the school has never even said to me, hey, you haven't paid us.
That was, uh.
And now it's, um, known. Yes, yeah, we know what it's for, but no one has sent us a bill. Or I don't know how it was historically paid.
I don't.
So I think first, uh, it's probably good to have a conversation about the capital outline. Because I want to make sure that I was under the understanding with you guys of. What that looks like, so. We've kind of pivoted and did different things of like, we realized we need eight to ten percent reserve, so we took the capital, rolled it over into reserve. That was the goal for us to have that percentage of a reserve, moving forward. If a department needs something new and they're budgeting for it in capital. And they budget for it and it doesn't get spent till the fall and gear and it stays in there because they've allocated the money to computers or whatever. Okay, because this note reflects what I'm, the guidance I'm giving based on our conversations and I just want to make sure we're all clear that that's how we. Thought that, like, that was what we anticipated, right? Okay.
Formalize that some sort of policy or something, we could do that eventually.
I just want, want to make sure because it's like.
Yeah, I took it to zero and honestly, I mean. If you guys wanted to adopt a policy on computers, on what cycle we're doing those on, I wouldn't do that as well. I was operating under what I was told when I first came, I think it's every three years. So that's how I've been doing my capital outlay, it's just based on my computers.
And I know you had mentioned that you may have additional capital for this year after your renovations, cause Brian came in under what. Like Brian's obviously a savior when it comes to the budgets that you would express maybe wanting to utilize that in the courts.
I don't know how much I will. Yeah, so I had over forty thousand dollars previously, I had spent. I had given money to the courts for the electronic upgrade, I used part of my capital outlay for that and I used part of my diversion fund money to do that. From there, we're doing all of our renovations out of that overage capital outlet, I never asked for any increase in funding. To address our safety concerns and to update the office. I don't know how much will be left at the end of that, but I know at the end of this year, I'm looking at. A projected twenty-one thousand dollars, maybe twenty-two thousand dollars in unused money and that's because of employee. When I had an employee who was terminated, that position will be filled until August first, so there's some savings from payroll there. And likewise, I have the victim witness position budgeted for January one, she didn't start till mid-May. So we're expecting to have about twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars. In payroll, that's unexpended. And yes, I would like to use that money for the courts. Brian and I had talked about completing the stairwell, it's just.
Right.
The ceiling's falling in up there in spots and it's dark and. So we had talked about completing the stairwell with that money and then using the rest for the courts, which is not a huge amount, but. I would hope they could come up with a phase, phases for their floor.
No, it has to be, it's just to be a best deal on something.
Right, so I had told them that I would be more than happy to help with that.
Should that just be over to capital outlay, let's say the year happens, yeah, right? And then it'll be put into the spreadsheet to reflect.
And then, bros, like how much was it, say, ten? That, that you would, you'd give over to the courts.
Twenty-one to twenty-two thousand.
I didn't, yeah, well, I, I heard that figure then, I heard you needed some for your stairwell, that's not gonna be much.
I don't know, that's. Figure that'll just come off the top and then whatever's left can go over, I mean, we don't have a lot of projects. To me, the courtroom is important, I use a lot of technology in the courtroom. That's why I said, hey, I'll help chip in, I wanted a seat at the table, I'm the one using the technology. The judge, for the most part, is. And I knew that we had changed the way that we even appear in court with Zoom. But the problem was if there was an attorney in the courtroom and went on Zoom, we couldn't hear each other very well, so now we have it where we have some cameras and we have microphones. And everyone can hear everyone and see everyone, that's pretty beneficial in this. And in fact, defense attorneys have even commented that if they, if the court does away with Zoom, they may not stay on the court appointed list anymore. It's too hard to just travel back and forth to all the jurisdictions that they're in. So, um, I thought it was pretty important for someone who uses the technology to have a seat at that table, so I was happy to. Help with that cost.
I don't know whether this is kind of on, on offshoot, but I had seen on television and I think the. Program is called Life House, it was in Topeka and they were, they actually, when they have juveniles, they can come in. They can do their testimony in and record it, so they don't necessarily have to go back to. Court so often, I know that eventually they'd have to be car sick or whatever, but for like preliminary trials and everything, they don't have to just keep coming in and, and telling.
So you're probably talking about a forensic interview, so.
I, I think that's what it is, but they, they were talking about donating to this. They call, I think it was Life House is the, the name of the place where the kids, they kind of go to get maybe even therapy or. Uh, that kind of hell and then they can do this in a setting that's not necessarily a court setting. And it's recorded for smaller, uh, you know. Free trial hearings, things like that, but they would need testimony so they don't have to come in live every time, so.
So CASA is our, um, provider who does our forensic interviews unless there's a conflict. And they also record theirs, I think they got, I think they have new equipment because it wasn't great to begin with. And then to piggyback, we have a statute, but the child has to be below a certain age before I can use. The recorded interview in, in lieu of live testimony, only at a preliminary hearing, they have to testify at the trial, so yes, we have that ability.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, cause I thought CASA sounded close to it, but I didn't know they were recording, so that's.
They report theirs as well. CASA hasn't said anything to me about needing anything. I'm sure they always want money because they are also grant funded, but last I knew. Cause we were having some problems with some of their recordings and I was told, well, that was our old system, so that made me feel like, well, maybe going forward, wouldn't have those issues. So, we kind of keep that on my radar, but honestly, I don't expect, I want to operate full capacity. I don't expect to really have any more years where I have a windfall of money left over. It was just when we hired Michelle, she didn't start right at January one, so we had some money for that and then this year with having some turnover and. Our other position, that's why I have some money, I don't expect that to continue in the future.
Respect it.
Well, and that's what I was trying to look, because I know that you rose to the occasion when we asked to go down. Uh, and it's eighty-seven hundred dollars, um, so I was just trying to understand what you sacrificed to hit that.
I took.
The contractual.
So contractual services is a little, there's a few things in there. Anytime there are transcripts ordered, that's paid out of contractual services, because even though if there's a court reporter, they charge a fee. To transcribe whatever notes they took during the hearing. Um, and they charge both parties, whoever requests it bears the brunt of the majority of the expense, but whoever gets a copy also has to pay the expense. That's a much smaller one, so that's in there and also our appellate services are in there. So anytime there's a trial, the defendant has the right to a free appeal, basically. Through the Court of Appeals and they can sometimes even appeal to the Kansas Supreme Court and they decide whether they accept or reject that request. And so, in fact, I'm working on three right now, so that's something that I have been doing, but. You have to contract someone to do it, whether it be me, another attorney, or the attorney general's office. You'd have to, otherwise your appeals wouldn't be affirmed, you just have to do it over and over.
Asking for a dollar amount of contraction services, well, we need, it's been the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's.
That's the same.
Yeah, that's what I, and I know you're trying, like you don't have a lot of line items when outside of personnel, really? So, so when I'm looking at what you're cutting, I just want to make sure, like, I know that you. Follow the guidance we were giving you, but also don't want to get to the end of the year and be like, well, I'm over now because you made me. At things that I actually needed, because twenty-twenty-two prior, your actual was at ten grand.
Historically, it has been, the only thing I can think of, which is what made me justify cutting it back a little bit is. Part of those jury trial expenses are based on the number of trials you did the previous year, so last year we were catching up from COVID. So I have a pretty good chunk of appeals this year, so you just get jury trial, year one, appeal, year two. Well, this year, we have not had as many jury trials, so that makes me feel like next year, then I won't have quite as many appeals. Now, it doesn't think there's gonna be zero, but, uh. I don't know if it's five thousand dollars though, to be honest with you, but that was the only way in my mind, I thought, if we have to cut something. I know we didn't have as many jury trials.
Would you feel more comfortable, you get a ten for next year?
Historically, it's been ten.
Yeah, I, I feel like.
I agree.
We got paid anyway.
But we appreciate you being willing to take a look and.
Yeah.
And make the reductions.
The other thing I reduced was the licensing and dues, um, and we talked about this during my initial meeting that. Wanted me to move out training for future years, but that's why I think last year it was a little bit more. Than what we had budgeted for, I think we were at three thousand dollars. Um, I upped it to seventeen hundred and then cut it back down to a thousand. And like I said, in the future, I'll be cutting out training and making that separate, but lawyers have to get so many hours a year to keep our license. And we typically go to a prosecutor conference or they also offer it virtually, we've been trying to do the virtual one, but sometimes you just can't. Make it.
So should you have something in here though?
You went from seventeen hundred to a thousand.
No, and this one of training, here for, question about. So do you want to?
No, I think going forward, I will. Yeah, going forward, I will pull that training out, but when I had been at my last budget meeting. I hadn't looked at it, so I didn't know you wanted that separate, but so going forward, I will pull that out separate.
Okay. So it's more like seven fifty, two twenty-five or something like that.
It really depends on what conference we go to and what's happening.
Very much.
It's not too bad, we tried to do the Kansas prosecutors conference, like I said, one, it's twice a year, one's virtual, one's in person. Um, last year, we both did the virtual and got our hours, so there's no travel costs.
Charge for the virtual?
Yes. It's probably that two twenty-five.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Where you're meeting, she's, she's up to here, I got a back spasm, so.
Well, it depends, there are national conferences that they cost more, we haven't done one since I've been here. So. I'm sure, kind of like, probably in any industry, it just, they all have topics that are very specific and sometimes those are applicable to what you're doing and sometimes they're not. So I haven't found one that I thought, oh, this would greatly benefit my office.
Have any questions? Okay, so what I was hearing is we're going to add five thousand back in. And make her at ten for the cat contractual services.
And to go back, what, to do a truancy again, so trying to understand.
Okay, yeah, so. In, in St. Court, child in need of care, there's a couple of different problems. One of the problems involved when kids don't go to school, they have unexcused absences, there are too many or, uh. They're coming late, so that falls into the insurance program. And so what happens is the court then gets involved with the parents and the child and they have to appear. Well, the problem that we have is, as the county attorney's office, I don't have updated records about that child and. Whether they had medical notes, whether, um, they're now improving since we started this court system, whether they're not. Whether we're at the same level, so I don't know when, a long time ago. The county helped fund the truancy program, which is there is a person who is responsible from USC four oh nine to coming to court. And they give the court the updates on all of the kids in the program. And I know that the court, I know Judge Asher was very adamant that that was extremely helpful to him. And he thought that that was a huge benefit to him as part of the judiciary. And I also know now that Judge Sontag's on the bench. He has started doing some informal um programs with the truancy kids. To help minimize the amount of time they're spending in court. I'm sure it can be kind of hard, like they don't know anything about court. And now they're having to come to court because their, maybe their parent didn't get them to school on time throughout the year. So he's trying to work with the truancy um officer to do some informal programs. To help alleviate the strain of them coming to court, but they have to have that flow of information. That's the only way it works. That's so, it used to be in Shelley Nelson's budget, which she was the director. And I don't, so when they asked to roll it over, I really wasn't given much information. And all we knew was no one sent us the bill. So we just need to figure out how it gets paid. Historically, it's been paid, but I haven't paid it because no one sent me a bill, so I need to figure out. Oh, really?
Twenty twenty was the last time, unless it came out somewhere else. Yeah, probably community corrections.
They had to, because it hasn't been in my budget that long.
No, it was just twenty three this year.
Oh, okay. Can you see when it was in Shelley's?
I probably can.
So was it intentionally moved to your budget?
Yeah, because I don't, that was last, that was for the twenty three budget season.
Discussing, that's what surprising, I just.
We did. It's just so small, though. Because Shelley was saying that that was the only reason she was coming, was just for that. And they asked for just ease of budgets. I said, that's fine, if that's what everyone wants to do, if you want to move it back, that's fine, too.
It could be worth Tom Vincenting with Katie.
Whatever you want to do.
They're doing the MOU with four oh nine and all the things, so.
Our truancy pro for the truancy, no, I don't think so. Um they're just supposed to send court reports and because I don't run that docket, I guess I don't have as much updated information I can find out from Michelle. And I just don't think they have it's many truancy kids.
Well, no, wouldn't there? Resource Officer Program, what? But I was thinking that they. Were supplying information to the courts and things like that, if there was.
Them stuffs and three seventy seven.
So that's different. That's more like enforcement and searches and they're, they are having a faith issue, stuff like.
Okay, that's where, but I know that that was part of that program that they could supply. Even maybe even like, yeah, the absence, absences and things like that.
That's for community corrections also, so.
I I don't know where that comes, but I know, well, I think that's through the sheriff.
That would be my guess.
Yeah, I think that's through the sheriff.
Police Department, they have their own.
Well, well, we're kind of bumping into that. Kid's not there, there's the S R, but they all at school and not the kid is.
If if you want to move it back over to community corrections, I I don't have any qualms, obviously I'm paid it. Not because I don't want to, I just didn't know a whole lot about it. I know, right? They turned me in, and the thing is, I said, no one's even emailed me to say.
Somebody's get paid on that. They historically paid it, so when they got it, they paid it, but didn't, it's like, oh, where did that go and?
Haven't done an audit yet. And now that you're talking about community corrections, I did tell Katie, I think she's talked to you about some of the programming. We we weren't able to get some of the grants this year, but I'm really excited about the things that she'll put in for next year for the grants. She came to me and she talked to me a little bit about the programming that she wants to do. And I told her with that capital outlay money that I would be happy to help with books for that program. But I told her that I thought she should use the funding that she currently has first. And then come to me when that runs out, and then we will help fund those programs, the books for the people. Um as they're referred to by the force. I don't, I think it is used. I think it does need to go to school. Right.
It's not that much.
Right.
But you're good taking it out of Katie's good putting it in, like. Yeah, okay.
That's fine with me.
Just a big question mark.
So I don't know if she told you about that conversation or if our conversation happened after she spoke to you about, we talked about that. And I think, I think programming is important, especially when it comes to the juvenile side. And adults too, but I think the more programming we can get in front of juvenile. Yeah, so I said I'm on board to help.
Thank you. Any other questions for sharing?
I do, I do. You know, and I've spoken, I know that we're online, so I don't want to talk too much about employee salaries. But I, you know, I spoke to you guys a little bit about um my assistant's position. And my goal is to get her up to the, you know, the rate that I had started at. And I was really working with um the performance valuations and trying to run it through that area. So as you see that increase, that's why with experience and meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. That's going to be coming as well, so. But we do, we do the annual performance valuations, and I turn those into HR. We've been doing our market research, so. Thank you. All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you send us the the clerk elections one too, like you did first.
Sure.
Well, and I can probably find it and order it, but.
You got it.
Oh, yeah, you want this?
It's thinking, I guess. Yeah, it's going to keep it, I don't know if it's changed since.
The buffering. I, you already have the sound of the Jeopardy music. Which drive you, that thing drives me crazy and that music drives me crazy. Buffer, buffer, buffer. Just put aside, on the audit, do we, did we get a copy of the actual audit?
Yes, they they came in the mail yesterday.
Okay, so that's physical.
I do have one.
Might as well send it to all three of us. You know what, I just want the summary, the management summary page, it's in the summer, it's called.
Yeah, and I think you guys got that one.
Or is, if if it's that big, would it be best if I just?
Yeah, I'd like to get it too, because those.
Thought I'd just send it all again in case. That audit that I just emailed to you, um we have filed that with the state. That's per our requirement, let's file with state first. Then once they receive it and receive payment, then we can pay the auditing firm. And we have to do it in that order for it to be accepted properly, so. There will be an invoice that comes through AP for the audit. Soon, couple of weeks or so. Um is the state has to get the payment, has to clear before we can make the checkout.
Now, is anybody going to come and go over the budget with us?
They didn't indicate that they would. I mean, I think that they will, they just, we need to ask them to, I guess.
That's bizarre. From the other auditors I've talked to, it's like, they always make a point to come before the commissioners and explain the audit, but.
I haven't been through another where they didn't do that. Things too, yeah. And for, you know, like with NECAP and them, they don't necessarily come. I think one of them, they they just have. Visit with their chief, their resource officer, they're not resource officer, but your financial person, they go over it.
Maybe they think that that's us.
Yeah, so they don't. So.
I just feel like it puts you in an awkward situation to explain the dings when it's, they did the audit. They should be able to explain them better to us if we have questions of who's at fault, how do we correct it, all the things.
Before they did the audit, did they call you?
No, I've never met them or talked to them.
That's also. I have. I I have, and I also stopped in voluntarily a couple of years ago. They were working in a commission room. I stopped in and visited with them, I said, is there anything you need to ask us or know? Uh know about and had a good rapport with them, uh but our previous auditor. And I can't remember who that was. But they had a change, yeah, recent availability. Then they changed their lead person, and that year, they actually called all three commissioners to come in and. Basically, talk to a one on one with their auditor, you know, and and they kind of. And they, I I, which I was, it was different than I had done before, past. But I mean, it was kind of like, they ask you point blank, is there anything that you feel needs to be said? Is there anything that you've seen that you have got questions about? You know, it's like, it it was a little, it was more in your face thing, but it was good. I mean, I I I expect that. So I. I don't phone call or in person. It's interesting, yeah.
All right. Michelle's budget. Does anybody have questions or do we want to just go down through? Yes, clerks and then elections to follow on that.
I did increase the office of life printing um for the R and R notices. I have to have the authority to spend the money in order to receive it back. I mean, I I I don't want to go over budget violation, but on the R and R notices, they are to reimburse us this year. But I have to have the money out there to be able to spend it, the authorization to spend it without getting the violation. But then they would rip it free and reimburse us. So. Yes, next year, they're probably not going to reimburse us.
Well, you're going to do the year to year thing for a while, it's, you know, so it affects your postage and your printing.
Postage comes out of. Yes. And last year, when we, I forgot what's last year, didn't do it last year, so we got repaid from a. For twenty twenty, we got money back and part of that money went back into general or postage. So I bumped that up a little bit on the office of life and printing.
And also. Encompasses. AP. Because when we sub budget for twenty three. AP was not part of. Because that was in the middle of two, and it was in another office at that point, so we had to budget it. Twenty three was already ongoing. Which was after the budget cycle was already done. For twenty three, that's why this year, that's why we put it in.
I know those bigger cartridges run roughly three hundred dollars a piece, and we go through probably two of them a year. Due to AP, because you have to have a special cartridge um in order to print checks. Because if you don't use the special cartridge, then they smear or they're dotted or.
So when it gets, when it runs through the bank to clear, it lifts the magnetic ink off of the check. And that's how the system and the banks.
So we should see increase in clerk and decrease in HR for the transition of that word.
I believe they still like AP checks over there.
Okay, so you need that same ink, okay, all right, I was just trying to understand.
They may not have as much of it, but they still will have that expense.
Um do you want to go down line by line? Because a lot of like on the clerk ones, I didn't make a lot of. I didn't personally make a lot of adjustments with, when it came to the benefits. Um the health insurance part kind of looked at that as far as the percentages that that we were told to use. So I didn't really adjust, I didn't make adjustments other than the percentages we were told to use. But the office supplies and printing, I did increase that basically for the R and R. Uh we will be folding those and stuffing those ourselves, so we won't go through. The company, printing company. Because I didn't know, at one time we had talked, there it was mentioned about putting the fair, the things you send in the fair. Out with every one of the. out with every one of the R and R notices, or at least one per taxpayer. So I don't know.
That. That's what we done last year when there's the, all the folding and we have enough staff to do that, or?
Yes.
I mean, are you still use the inmates again?
We could if we need to. We could if we need to, I'm sure, but I'm hoping to.
We were up against a time crunch too, last, okay, last year I came in and helped fold.
Right, I think it would save money um, in the long run if we did it ourselves in the office, because when inmates, which they did a great job, but it was like, stick a page in an envelope, stick a page in an envelope, they weren't really looking to check to see if there were multiple people that had property. Because you could stick four, five, six, ten in an envelope versus just one, one, one. But I wasn't complaining, because like I say, we were up against a deadline. Right. Um, licensing and dues, we did go up just a little bit for um, the KSGFOA, which is a finance director organization.
It's been very helpful, because with that, uh, the Kansas Governors Financers Officers Association dues actually get to be part of a list, and so it's nice to be able to balance financial ideas. A lot of that people that's in there, I believe it consists of five hundred various um, finance people across the state of Kansas.
It's a good resource. Grains, that's very much.
Yeah, that one might. Can change. I think um, I'm gonna try to do remote, yeah, the CIC conference. And I just, I I put in there to go to the the Kansas GFOA conference, it's in Overland Park, so there would be no expense to me other than the conference registration, just a couple hundred dollars, but we can save all that. Since I live down in that area, so lodging. Um, I do think the the only one that I would like to keep in this line item is the municipal budget workshop in Topeka, it's seventy-five dollars to attend that.
We can take on the leadership. Plus, but I would like to do the Sandborn Academy, because I did get my master's, uh, clerk, a master's clerk.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How much is that?
Which, the leadership?
Yeah, to take out.
Um, I don't know for sure, that was the.
So.
That's the one that Jody's done and Seth has done it.
I'm not saying, I'm just asking why it was higher. It's, it's money, it's spent. Yes, thank.
I think it's up to her.
Yeah.
If you wanted to get out, like.
That's.
Well, I mean, I, any training that we, myself or Mark or even our girls can get, um, I feel is is a benefit.
Absolutely.
Um, but then I don't, I mean, like, the municipal budget is definitely needed. I mean, I think all of you guys have taken that at least once, and I like to go every year because there's things that change within every year.
Well, and it's just a refresher, we only do it one year.
Yes.
I know.
Yes.
We get the dates and the nice little packet when we go.
Right, um, the Sandborn Academy is just something that I've gone to every year, it's it's great for county clerks. Um, it's more education for county clerks, um, and then there's the county clerk and election official association conference that we get to every year, which is just good to be able to talk to people and figure out how different people do different things and not reinventing the wheel, just to kind of extend it. So.
Sounds good.
But that's not just my classes, that's from myself and Mark mainly on the clerk side. And but once again, I am expecting to get reimbursement for all of the costs in regards to the mailings, which the postage loan was like six thousand dollars last year, and the envelopes I've already purchased were close to eight hundred dollars. So.
Was that a hundred percent reimbursement this year?
Yes. And I even believe we can add our time to it. Um, as far as the election, are you guys done with the county clerk one, which you have their questions in regards to that? Um, as far as the election goes, um, we are having the presidential preference primary, and we have been told just within the last couple of weeks that we will be getting that money back as well. But once again, I will need the organization to spend that money before, I don't want to go much violation. So, um, that's why my election budget, for the most part, is higher in a lot of the the funds, because I have to treat the presidential preference primary the same as I would any other election, which guaranteed to have a primary, and then we'll have the general.
Just on like process, you you have the the authority, and then you get reimbursed, so then what do you, how does that manifest itself? Is that just stay there and get rolled over?
Uh, the money basically would be put back into the fund where it came from, but as far as the reserves, I don't, I don't need the reserves, I don't need to remodel my room, um, my room, I don't have time in twenty twenty-four to remodel my room.
I'm just kind of curious how that, you know, because.
It's gonna be a bad year.
I've never had a reserve fund anyway, I've never, never.
It's, it's. You're raising the money to have it there, but then you get reimbursed, I mean, I just wondered then on the back end of it, what happens to it?
So like if you have expenses for five thousand dollars, you got your budgeted five thousand, then you get your revenue of five thousand, it goes into a reimbursement line. Then at the end of the year, we look at how much is in reimbursements, and then that money will offset your expenses, so that would wash out and leave zero.
Okay, that's already levied, what you're saying.
Yeah, I was saying, it's already levied, so I mean, then there's extra there, does that roll over into the reserve fund? I mean, okay, that's, that's what I'm. Or do you spend it on something else?
No, I wouldn't spend it on anything else, because I don't have anything else that.
As far as.
And it's more process, it wasn't necessary just to you, but I mean, that would work.
The revenue drop is something, if there's a possibility, maybe twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty, yeah, I would not have any time whatsoever, twenty.
I I can see that.
Um, there's no way I'm gonna have people going downstairs to to get ballots, I can't guarantee that it's gonna be done, because we're having an election in March, um, August, and then November, I don't know that there's a timeframe that's long enough or big enough to to get anything done.
Follow me, it's the uh, uh, the special election, stuff like that, you can deal with that, I mean.
Yes.
Smaller.
Yeah. So but the presidential preference primary is gonna be countywide and as well the other two, so we're gonna have all of the polling locations, we're gonna have all of the poll workers, we're gonna have, you know, just as much with them as we will with the others. If somebody um, wants advance, I believe they're gonna do all of that with the presidential preference. We'll have the advanced voting in in the house and courthouse, so. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, what about first, first, it's a swap and equipment and switching gears on the, so I said, running ahead.
Um, I didn't put anything in my budget, but like I say, I've never had a reserve fund, so I've never, I've never really thought to spend any money on it there anyway.
But. First, voting machine.
The voting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, um, it's gonna be roughly fifty thousand dollars for the new one, but I have not been able to get ahold of them to figure out as far as a buyback. Because we will still need, we still will need at least probably two, if not three of the DS two hundreds, which are the tabulation machines that we have now, but we would not need them in the other offices, and I have twelve of those. So.
It sounds it's pretty good cost savings, and sounds it saves money, it's faster, and I would say full group, but pretty slick.
Even the space.
Yeah, space storage, it seems like an awful lot of wins. So should that be put in this budget for making those transitions next year, or should that be done next year to deal with transition, uh, major election here?
Um, they probably could get it going before twenty-four, if it's something you have me to look into.
I do.
I agree.
It sounds like it'd be a lot easier for everybody.
I I think it would, to me, it looks like in a three-election year, it's gonna be awful crap.
We, with the, with the being new equipment, they would have someone come that first election and work it with us.
Well, that's.
Sure.
We're using, we're not using the uh, the tabulator, the great big one, um, the the four hundred or the four fifty. Um, that's the one that they would come, they would have somebody come and work with that first election. Plus two, um, Amanda and Justin Snowden utilize this piece of equipment, um, because that's what they test their coding in.
And they live right here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may be, I mean, because they are with PS and S, which is where we could get the equipment, so they may be able to be the ones to be.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah. So.
I would, I would encourage just, how would that, how would that affect the budget part? Or what would that, you know, trading them out, though, you're trading, don't you get traded?
I would be trade, I would be trading them at, um, those machines. I'm thinking more close to five thousand dollars a piece. The touchscreen, um, handicap accessible newer technology, um, those are roughly twenty, twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven fifty a piece. And you're twelve, you said? I have twelve. To be able to trade in toward this. I would keep probably two, if not three, because I would want them in the office still, because in the office, I think they're probably. But even at nine, that would almost pay for the new one, within five thousand bucks. If we can get a good return on. Yeah, I can have a meeting, um, and I know that they would probably even come and talk to you guys, Adam, as far as the commission. Or we can just set up something as far as schedule a demo or something, and then just give you guys the time and place, location, and have you guys be present if you want to.
In time for to get budget figures in, I mean.
I can get with them as far as budget figures.
Well, that's.
I would like.
Yeah, that's maybe the budget.
That's, yeah, the timing of that, but then.
And then for the rest of, yeah, I mean, you might as well be a poll worker, see, and we get by the Republican Democrat Party or whoever, so, whoever you want.
Right.
I wish, several people will get feedback.
I'd be very leery about availability, because there's been a lot of stuff with anything with computer chips or anything, you know, it's like availability. Presidential year, there, they might be short of things to.
I've already spoken to her in regards to it, so, um, she knows that I'm.
Interested.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's only one machine, I think, um, the more, or not the more, Shawnee County has a, one of the eight fifties or something, it's like twice the speed, twice the size, plus they have a four hundred, or I can't remember the actual.
Yeah, a lot of pounds put through there, so.
Yeah, yeah, it runs like a thousand per hour versus five thousand per hour.
It's crazy.
But Shawnee County has a lot of voters.
Oh, yeah. Makes sense.
But I think, I think it would be, it might be every fifteen minutes, I don't know, but it is.
It might be less gross than you knew it should be, too, because it is tough.
And then.
And there's almost twenty-four thousand in here. Election.
I don't think you sports it. So that would be happening there, so if I can get reimbursements from what I can sell back, then that might have, that might be enough.
Sliding, it's a.
Would probably be.
Actual, I guess.
Office equipment. Because I don't know that I have anything, there may be, there may be some.
Actual something, and then, and then.
My maintenance contracts is roughly the same. Um, because they have, we have warranty on those machines that we still have, so that that maybe would change just a little bit.
You would still have coding and everything.
Mm-hmm. Coding, audio layout, and then the actual ballots themselves.
Also. Who's, it's a more careful.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, that's what's.
Alright, I'm interested.
Okay.
Sure.
So might not, may not be a big impact for our budget discussion, really.
Right, okay. You might save a thousand, two thousand, four hundred dollars maybe. On your maintenance contracts, but you still have maintenance on.
Right.
The ones that you want to keep, plus this other thing. Right.
Okay.
And a big budget impact, and.
I did recently, yeah, I did recently, um, purchase new iPads. Um, they were purchased in stages, um, the poll workers basically sign our our votes and on the iPads. Um, it's no week.
No week.
No week. So it's um, our poll books, like they're the electronic poll books. So I did recently replace those, um, some of them. Um, so I know I'm gonna have some sort of a warranty that I will have to pay for this, a contract for maintenance. Um, but they, I think it's a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty-five per. So.
Cause you were doing them in groups of five.
Mm-hmm, I have thirteen total, because we use three in-house, and then I have ten public locations, for the most part, those are all up to date, and serve.
They'll just sit around all year, and say.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it is crazy.
That's very, very decent resources.
We have to get them out and charge them about two to three times a year, kind of keep the guards on, but you're supposed, you're not supposed to charge them full, you're supposed to charge them about anywhere from half to three quarters. So, but I did get those updated this last year, so we shouldn't have to buy those for a couple of years. As long as the iOS still updates on, which all of ours are, okay.
Good.
You have anything? Okay, so I wanted to bring up, um, to hear your side of things and to understand, because we have a really hard job, and we sit in budget workshops and get a lot of information thrown at us, and like, we started out with three million over and and all the things, and then it comes to us, um, that there's increases being made by elected officials within the courthouse and big increases, and it puts us all in a bind, and that's why you get an email back from from us on behalf of the finance director communicating for us of like, oh no, we're gonna shut this down, because we don't know how else to handle it other than with elected officials, budget authority. I know that there have been some long-term or longstanding employee retirements, um, in certain departments, and we've, we're learning through the process of, once that budget is approved, elected officials can do with it what they want, like, we can talk about these line items all day long, but at the end of the day, like, you have four hundred thousand dollars to do how you need to do, and so I just hope, and 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 it was kind of disheartening to me, because it's like, we want to be a team, and we all want to come together, we want to do what's right, and like, we're in this position of three million dollars over, and then we're being told that these increases are happening one after another after another, and it's, it's not, it doesn't feel good, it doesn't feel good, and then we have, um, our appointed department heads coming to us going, what, like, this is hurting us, and it's just created a lot of negativity, um, I feel, I feel it, um, and I've heard about it, and so I just kind of wanted to hear your side of things as an elected official who is who has had that happen of a retirement in your office, you know.
who has had that happen of a retirement in your office, you know, and.
I don't feel that I use the retirement or means of gaining anything. Um, I was paying that person quite a bit of money, um, I did have payout for that person, but I didn't, I didn't stand to gain, or neither did my people stand to gain, because I lost her, because I don't think I had very much calculated, um, with paying out. I mean, I I don't really want to say anything.
Yeah, and I was trying to, I'm, I'm trying to get this so we can all feel better about having this conversation together without crossing any lines of executive session, but I love having a conversation in person, face to face, to squash all of this stuff, and because it's bred a lot of behind the scenes.
This.
Yes, well, he did this, and she did this, and he did this, and it's like, guys, like, we're all here on the same team representing the constituents of Ashland County. We all have to be fiscally responsible with our actions and our moves and and also a fear of mine, and this is just because when we're here getting the information given to us, I never want those folks that are getting the increases to feel like we don't feel they deserve it, because that's absolutely not true.
And it's been spoken about a lot in my office, and my people are, are very upset.
Well, and that's not okay, and and so, like, I think it's really good to have these conversations to where everyone knows, like, it's not about not deserving anything, it's just about the information we're given of one-upping and and.
And I didn't do anything to one-up anybody. I didn't put my people higher than any one person, I didn't give my people six and seven dollar raises, which I've heard has gone around too, I mean, I'm not giving, I didn't give huge raises, I, um, I gave raises compared basically to what I felt the jobs were being performed. Um, and the the reason I gave the raises is because I enjoy the team I have, and I don't want to lose them because somebody else pays higher. And I'm not talking in Ashland County, I'm talking in another county, because one of my people does not live in Ashland County. And if I lose them to another high pay, higher paying county, which I know they pay higher. I don't, I don't want to lose them, I mean, they have the same software we have. I, I just, I really like the staff that I have, everybody works well together, and we get done, I feel whatever, everybody needs, what, what we need to get done, I mean, we're not, we're not sitting around, we're not on the, on the internet, we're, we're, we're working. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we've not been able to get done, that we're going back and we're able to get done, and it's just, it's working really well. So, but I didn't do anything to one-up any one person, I didn't do anything to mastermind any other office or try to get, be better than any one other office, I mean, I I sat down with, with Mark and we gave employee evaluations for, for everybody and we talked about it, I mean, I didn't, I didn't think to call Jody, I contacted H R. And we talked, and I basically have apologized because I shouldn't have went and did it by myself, but I had Mark with me, and so I thought it was okay. So, but I've talked to Jody and I think we're all on the same page with that.
Well, and just to piggyback off that, at that time. So, I think now we have a good understanding with the reserve fund, and if there is a retirement that is unforeseen, it can be, and it goes over the personnel line or any office, it can come out of the reserve fund um, to cover it if they go over their budget. Um, but if you have an employee that has a policy in place that you can have up to X amount of hours and then be paid out that X amount of hours, that's a huge hit to any department, it can be two hundred and forty, three hundred and sixty hours, whatever the number is for Ashland County's policy. So, when you, when you have an employee that says I'm going to retire, you're like, oh, okay. Well, how much P T O time do you have? Well, I don't have that in my budget, or so you bank on hopefully putting that in your budget to account for that retirement net. And then things happen, we can't control the employee either, so they decide to go on a few vacations. And they spend down their P T O. Well, we've already budgeted X amount of dollars to fund that payout, right? So then, so I think there needs to be a better way, and I think we have that better way now with the reserve. So.
Instead of budgeting with things, having.
And that's what we were told at one time, was that we had to have that money in our budget to pay out, but I never, I never banked on the two hundred and forty hours. I never budgeted for that, because I know that happened.
Now is, is a better time where we have the reserve, or if there is a requirement of course.
And I took office in seventeen, and I've never had a reserve. I've never had any place to go back and say, oh my gosh, you know, I, in order to get my equipment in twenty eighteen, I borrowed it from Wes. Wes had it in his budget, and we were able to get the equipment from that. So I didn't have the extra. So, I mean, it was a, a give and take from other offices, which is what I've done every year, because I never went over budget. My money has always went into reserve fund, and I've never gotten any of that, which I'm not complaining about, because it is something that if I don't have to spend all of my budget, because at one year, all of my employment benefits were really off. But you don't know who's gonna need insurance, you don't know who's gonna need a, you know, a H S A, and you don't know who's gonna need all of that, so it's hard to estimate. But I, I had a lot left over, and I just, it preserves doesn't, doesn't calculate with me, because I don't ever expect to spend reserve money. I mean, it's, I've never had it, I've never, I just don't expect to, so I didn't save any or increase anything to put more money into reserves, because I don't expect to use it. So.
I, I appreciate that, because that's one of the things I think we see it this level of looking down of like, not comparing one another within the courthouse, it's like, you have these employees with these job descriptions, and this is the, like, not overlapping the departments, but more the clerk's office and the clerk's job, and that, you know, that versus.
Well, and you put election on top of it, and they're both equally involved with elections, I mean, yeah, that, because we have to be, yeah. Yeah, yes.
I just wanted it to be, I just think it's important, like, from the commissioner, like, we're navigating through everything we're given and and we're doing it, but like, not to say that they're not warranted, it's just making sure we're all on the same page and knowing, whoa, you know, where we're.
Well, and as far as, um, my budget, at the end of the year, October, November, December, I don't look for ways to spend budget. That's why I've had budget money left over here, I don't, I mean.
Appreciate that.
When I first got there, I had how many paper clips, I mean, I'm still using, I'm still using paper clips. I mean, I get pens from K A C when we go to conferences and stuff, I don't buy pens. I mean, there may be one specific pen, but it's a dozen pens, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't try to elaborate on the supplies. I mean, I'm, I'm still in a chair that's probably twenty years old, I don't care, because it's comfortable. I'm not, I'm not a person to elaborate in terms to try to be better than, I don't want to be better than, I just want to be able to do my job without extra stress that I.
That nobody needs.
No.
I feel like that's, and I know everyone in the courthouse has been feeling it, because they've shared that, and it's like, at what point, I like, also, we're only three people that meet on Tuesdays at the E O C, so it's like hard to have the conversations with everyone to say, like, how can we help, but also, we gotta work, we gotta stop just.
Right, and one person may say something and another person may say something else, but with you guys there one day a week, and you're actually here one day a week, I know you come in, and I know you go away on Tuesday mornings, you know, but it's like, how often do you guys actually just pop in and and see, because you may hear something, but if you're seeing something else, then it, it, you, I mean, it registers what you're actually seeing versus what you're being told, so it's, what you get told is not always the truth.
Amen, so sorry, so, learning that one.
Not just for me to, to go and see, it's kind of to be seen.
Yeah, right.
So, Mike, because I think the employees, when they see you there, it's like, okay, you know, they have a question, or, you know, it's like, yeah, well, they, they stop in or they care or whatever.
But I do plan on getting reimbursed for, um, the presidential preference primary, and I do plan on getting reimbursed for the R N R mailouts this year. And that money is gonna go back into, to reserves, I mean, but I have to have the authority to spend that money, so therefore I have to increase my budget.
Makes sense, so, okay, um, all right, any other questions for Michelle? Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Um, approval on expenses, your motion to approve expenses. Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
Is there anything more to sign on the, the big stack of bills?
Do you, any public?
I would sign too.
I'll, I'll make sure that I get them all.
Now. Okay. Well, I mean, we're down to public comment, so. Yep, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I look for a motion to adjourn. But he passed, he passed, yep, we got it.
Be that quick. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye, aye, pass three to zero, we are now adjourned.
I'm putting it some on them.
What is it?
It's a little strange.
It almost looks like stamp paper.